Cast a vote. We'll see his face in just a bit. If we could have Mr. Igo join us.
There he comes. Turn your camera on.
My video is on, where can you hear me?
I can, I can hear you, okay.
Can't see you.
Well, I have a start video here. I'll try to get my camera going, but I can hear you.
All right, good. Let's get started with the meeting. Good evening, everybody. This is the regularly scheduled meeting of this Yarmouth Board of Appeals. My name is Steve DeYoung and I chair this meeting. We will now convene the February 10th meeting of the Yarmouth Zoning Board of Appeals as required by General law, Chapter 30A, Section 18 through 25, and pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, an act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency. Where they couldn't come up with a shorter name. The public are able to attend this meeting either in person or via the alternative public access. Members of the public may watch the meeting live on Channel 18 or watch and participate in the meeting hosted by Zoom. The meeting notice provides necessary instructions to join the meeting via Zoom. Please note that audio, video, and screen sharing functions will be disabled for all attendees. You may request to participate in the meeting by raising your hand when it's the appropriate time. So I just want to, for everybody at home, take a roll call of who's present. Mr. Frapery, here? It's okay. Mr. DeYoung here, Mr. Martin?
Yeah.
Mr. Igo.
Present, here.
Okay, thank you. I don't think we're gonna need any visuals, but who knows? We'll get to it. So, as I said, it's the regular meeting of the Yarmouth Zoning Board of Appeals. We have four matters on our topic, agenda rather, this evening. And just so everybody knows, petition number 4934, which is the second matter on the agenda, is going to fourth position and the other two will move up. So let us start with Christina P. Dimitrio. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, nine Homer Avenue in South Yarmouth. That property is in the RS40 zoning district. The applicant seeks a special permit pursuant to 407, Bylaw Section 407, to build a family-related accessory apartment. Good evening, would you tell us who you are, please? Whoever's gonna speak on behalf of the petition.
My name is Konstantin Alexandrou. I'm the contractor for the project.
Okay. Tell us all about your petition.
Well, you guys heard it last time and there was a question about the square footage. Since then, I had listened to your advice and contacted the engineer for the project. And he wrote a letter. And I went back to the drawing board to make a sketch of how they derived their calculation. And this is in your package now. So prior to that letter, I had talked to Mr. Mark Grills, the building commissioner. And I had sent an all the letter to you guys because it's all based on how you count the square footage. So the engineer based her calculations on seven foot of height, which is according to the building code.
Okay, that's great, thank you. So, everybody at home will understand what we're talking about. This is the second hearing. The original having opened on December 9th of 21. The board had some questions about assuring that there was no greater than 800 square feet for the successor-related apartment. And we couldn't tell by the plans submitted to us. So you've now submitted more information, is that correct?
Yes.
All right. Now, Mr. Frapery, did you participate in that meeting?
I did.
Didn't, Mr. Martin, did you participate in that meeting?
No, I did not.
Did you see the video, of course, right?
I believe I did.
All right. Mr. Igo, did you participate in that meeting? Mr. Igo?
Sorry, yes, I did, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you. So you provided to us certain information that shows that it's under 800 square feet, is that right?
Yes.
And what is the actual square footage by your calculation or by the calculation of your engineer?
So the engineer calculates the square footage at 797 square feet. And she accounts for seven foot height of, on the second story. That's the only thing she counts towards the total square footage. When me and Mr. Grills did the calculation, it seems like there's probably 30 to 50 square feet over. Again, it's very subjective as to how you calculate that. And I don't think the bylaw helps as it.
Well, maybe we don't need to go there because I think it's pretty clear, but.
Yeah.
In any event, it's calculated out to be 795.
Yeah, 797 is the.
Number 97, I'm sorry. And this is for a family-related accessory apartment. You understand it will have to remain a family-related occupant? And you'll have to certify and acknowledge that to the town every year?
Absolutely.
Okay. Mr. Frapery, any questions about petition?
I don't think so. The design looked really good. I think the only thing we had a question on last time was the square footage. I'm a little confused by the letter that you sent. And then, but I guess that was before you got the engineers.
Yes, exactly. First, I had the meeting with Mr. Mark Grills. And then, after the fact, just a few days ago, the engineer got back to me with her calculations.
And they use seven feet as a height because you were talking six feet, I think, in this.
Yeah. Well, she, those are the references that she found in the code. And that's what she based her calculations on.
Okay, I mean, that's all I had, thank you.
Mr. Martin?
No, I don't think I, I mean, it's a large parcel of property that this type of unit, I'll call it, fits in very nicely with, just looks like a cute little barn. And seems to meet the criteria now based on the explanation of the square footage scenario. So I think it, I think we're okay. It doesn't have to be attached, does it, on the bylaw? The unit doesn't have to be attached, does it?
No.
Yeah. I know we've done some that haven't been, so.
Mr. Igo, any questions?
Just so we're clear, there was a meeting with Inspector Grills concerning this?
Yes.
And what did Inspector Grills, did he do the calculation?
Yeah, that was prior, the engineer's calculations and.
What did Mr. Grills come up with his calculations?
We came with 30 to 50 square feet more, but based on five or six foot height for the second story. And at seven foot height, actually, it comes at 797. So me and him, when we spoke, we didn't use the right references.
You confused me, I don't understand what you just told me. Can you tell me that again?
So when I first met with Mark Grills after the last meeting, with a square footage of between 730, I apologize, 830 and 850. But that was based on a height for the second floor, cutting out at five or six feet. I can't remember exactly what we were calculating. But then, after the fact, after it submitted all the information to the engineer, she actually used the seven foot height because that's what it's referenced in the code. And she came up with the current calculation of 797.
So Mark Grills determined this to be in excess of 800 square feet, is that correct?
Yes, but since then, I've met with him, showing him what the engineer came up with. And he agreed that this is, this is correct.
So you're making, you're making a representation to this board that Inspector Grills has determined that this structure as proposed is less than 800 square feet?
I'm suggesting that Mr. Mark Grills agrees with the engineer.
Now, you're making a representation that he said that, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, that's good enough for me.
All right, so we do have a correspondence from Michelle Cudillo? Is that how you say it? Professional engineer, and it's dated February 4 of 22. I am writing today in the capacity of a professional engineer for Bond Project in Law Apartment located at the above address, that being nine Homer Ave. After reviewing the square footage for the habitable portion of the building, it is my opinion that the safe, occupiable space is 797 square feet, as opposed, as follows rather, 420 square feet plus or minus on the first floor. And noting that 78 square feet are excluded from the overall count because they serve as the staircase for the basement and are only accessible from the outside, not connected to interior space. I found reference in the Massachusetts State Building Code as noted on Sheet A0, A0, where seven feet in height or more is the minimum required for habitable space, which would produce 377 square feet, plus or minus, on the second floor, as shown in the cross-section in floor plan. Okay, so, you know, unfortunately, we don't control it. It's part of, a very specific part of our, of our bylaw that these cannot exceed 800 square feet, and we can't deviate from that. So I'm glad that you were able to determine that it was in fact 795. I can understand that problem because you didn't have any dimensions on the original plan. So word to the wise, make sure to keep it under 800 square feet and make sure that you give us dimensions when you come in, okay?
Yes.
Does anyone in our audience care to speak in favor of this petition? If so, please come to the lectern. Seeing none, does anybody in our audience care to speak in opposition to this petition? If so, please come to the lectern. Seeing none, we now close it to the public input on the petition. We open it up to board discussions, deliberations. Mr. Igo?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have looked at these plans as the other, okay, I'm sorry, there's something coming up on my screen. I've looked at these plans not only tonight, but prior to the last meeting. It's really a beautiful little building and I think it's gonna fit very nicely on the lot. I do believe that the petitioner has met the criteria of the bylaw, in particular those criteria as set forth in Section 407. Having said that, I am planning on supporting this petition and I would urge the board to support it as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Igo. Mr. Frapery?
I know, I concur with Mr. Igo and I'm supportive of this petition also.
Mr. Martin, your thoughts?
Same thing, I think it's a good, nice use, nice building, nice addition to the neighborhood. And I also expect to speak to, vote in favor.
Okay, thank you. I always get very nervous when an engineer says plus or minus on square footage, though. In the future, you might want to tell them to be definitive. They are after all engineers, you know? If you're gonna use them and have them report. So a plus or minus is nevertheless, the ultimate conclusion of that letter is that it is in fact under 800 square feet. And we've accomplished what we needed to accomplish in order to approve this, I think. So I'll be supporting it as well. We have to do a roll, first we have to do a motion. Anybody prepared to make a motion on this petition?
I'll make a motion to approve this as presented.
And I'll second it.
Board care to have any discussion on this motion made by Mr. Frapery to approve the petition as submitted and without condition?
It's assumed that it has to be a family member, I'm assuming?
Yeah. Well, that's what they grant, they can't do anything with it. But they could come back and ask that it be a low, adjusted for income, you know, to fit into the inventory for the town if you ever stopped with that accessory use, okay? Keep that in the back of your mind, please. We're always happy to approve those, you know? All right, so does the board care to have any other discussion on the motion before putting it to a vote? Hearing none, Mr. Igo?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Frapery?
Aye.
And Mr. DeYoung, as I therefore carries, a decision will be drafted. It will be filed with the Town Clerk's Office. Once that is filed, 20 days must elapse before it's considered a final decision. But you will also have to take that decision, bring it to the Registry of Rights in Bonstal, and return proof that you've recorded it back to our Board Secretary. She will give you all the information you need to explain what I just said.
Thank you.
Good to see you.
Good to see you too.
Good to see you, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah?
Could you ask Selena, has my, my screen sharing disabled? I think that might be why I can't get my camera to work, maybe not, I don't know. It says host disabled participant screen sharing.
Okay. Why don't we give it just a second? Coming up in any event. So that petition, then the new order is that of Wayne E. and Doreen M. McNeil, who are petitioning in connection with property located 41 Gerusha, is that how you say that, Gerusha?
Mr. Chairman?
Property located in R25 zoning district. Our applicant seeks a special permit under Bylaw Section 104.3.2, Subparagraph 2, or in the alternative, oh, I'm sorry, and for a use permit variance under Section 202.5, Use Table A1, to raise and replace a single-family dwelling.
Hello? Good evening.
Mr. Chairman? Sorry to interrupt. Could we just have Mr. Igo turn on his chat function so we could walk him through this?
Oh, sure. Okay. I turned it on, yeah, sure.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Hopefully, we'll see you in a minute. So why don't you go right ahead and who's presenting this evening, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Paul Tardif. I'm an attorney in Yarmouth Port and I represent the applicants who are seated with me. This is Wayne and Doreen McNeil. And also, I believe, attending through the Zoom is Danny Gonzo from Down Cape Engineering, who, I don't know if he has to be promoted here, but I'd like to request that if he hasn't or he can hear and comment, that'd be helpful as well.
Do you need him promoted now?
I don't. And as you indicated, we are seeking a special permit to allow the McNeils to raise and replace their single-family home at 41 Gerusha Lane. This property is a corner lot. It's in the R25 zoning district and contains 16,133 square feet, 260 feet of frontage on Gerusha Lane, so, because it's a corner lot, it wraps around. And thus creating, obviously, a corner lot. The existing house contains one story, three bedrooms, and was constructed in approximately 1968. It complies with both front yard setbacks currently. It complies with one side yard setback. And it is located 9.7 feet from the westerly side setback where 15 feet is required. So just to orient you, it's this boundary right here. So 9.7 at this point. The lot, the lot coverage is at 9.4%. And the current height of the structure is approximately 18, 19 feet. The living space totals approximately 1,465 square feet. And there is a full basement on the westerly portion of the house. The applicant is proposing to raise the existing structure and replace it with a new one-story, two-bedroom, two-bedroom home with a two-car garage. The structure will continue to comply with both front yard setbacks, continue to comply with one side yard setback, and will improve the westerly side setback by moving the house from its present 9.7 feet to the boundary, back to 10 feet from the boundary. The height will increase slightly to 22 feet, but well under the required 35-foot maximum. A full basement and a new Title V septic system will be constructed. And neither will be sitting in the water table. The existing driveway, which will be, which is located currently here, is going to be removed and it will be relocated here in front of the garage instead, which makes a lot of sense. Lot coverage is gonna increase to 16.1%. Living space will increase to approximately 1,785 square feet, about, an increase of about 320 square feet. But again, reducing the number of bedrooms from three to two. Under 104.3.2, the board can issue a special permit if it determines that the raise and replacement will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than is the existing non-conforming structure. Well, the new structure and design, first of all, as you can tell from the plans, are gonna be beneficial to the neighborhood just from the aesthetics point of view. The house will comply, again, with two front yard setbacks, one side yard setback, and it will improve the other side yard setback to 10 feet. There'll be a new Title V septic system installed. This use obviously is permitted by right in the zoning district. The number of bedrooms is gonna be decreased. I don't think I've come across that in a long, long time. And the house will continue to be one-story, which I haven't seen in a long, long time either. But it is, if you've been through the neighborhood, consistent with the style and size of the homes in there. The project is not gonna be detrimental at all. We have spoken with Conservation Commission about whether any relief is needed from them. And we heard from Kelly Grant today saying, no, there is no relief needed, no filing need be made in this situation. I know that there have been some letters filed with some concerns. I don't know how you want to handle that, if you want to read the letter in first or hear from a butters?
You gotta speak to it, we all know what the issue is with being raised, or everybody that's familiar with.
Sure.
Why don't you speak to your response to the issues raised?
All right, well, first of all, the, the letter that you received first was from a Mary Butler, who is the Director of Better to the West. I'm just gonna show you, she's here. First thing you need to know is her structure is about 31 feet away from the boundary. And the only part of her house that is there is a garage that was converted into living space. And I do have some pictures for you. The first piece of her letter was that the privacy of her yard would be diminished. Currently, we're at 9.7 feet, we're moving that back to 10 feet. So I don't think there's gonna be any significant change whatsoever. There are two windows being proposed for that portion, that side of the house. Let me, let me show you where those are. So the side of the house that's facing that neighbor is right here. You can see there's two windows on either side of the chimney, which is a living room. This window up here is just there for aesthetics, nothing, no one can go up there and look. There's no up there at all, it's a one-story.
It's a crawl space up there, isn't it?
That's all it is. And then you have three windows here, which are part of their bedroom. And they're, they were designed that way so that light can come in, but they can't see out. No one can see in, there'll be lots of privacy. So this is what they're gonna be looking at. I do want to show you some pictures of her side of the property so you'll have an understanding of what.
If you show them to us, we have to receive them as exhibits.
Yes.
Like a pretend court here. Yes, sir. Thank you. Why don't you tell us what they depict as a mark?
So there are three pictures that were just submitted. These were taken, taken from the driveway of the McNeils. This is the driveway that's going to be abandoned and seeded. And the driveway's going to the other side of the property. But I wanted to show you that there is not much by way of vegetation there between their house and the McNeil's house. The second thing I want to show you is, and will be a little bit more important, is the, the fact that that lot is raised up. And you can see it's raised by about three feet above the McNeil's lot is currently. The other thing is, with regard to privacy, is now that, because that driveway is going to be moved to the other side of the house, the other side of the property, there's gonna be a lot more privacy with regard to headlights coming in, going in that driveway and backing out and that type of thing. So the, this property that you're looking at in these pictures, on the other side is Anastasia Drive, Road? Anastasia Road. So that is also a corner lot. On the other side of this backyard is a stockade fence that Ms. Butler has erected to have privacy. And for whatever reason, it's not on this side at all. The second argument that she makes, as well as two other neighbors, a Mr. Warnock and a Mr. Ebert, seem to, seem to be that their, their concern is that the construction of this house with a full basement will somehow cause water to infiltrate their homes. There is no evidence whatsoever to support that conclusion. What these gentlemen and Ms. Butler are relying on is a study that was done by the town of Yarmouth had commissioned in 2003 to look at the water table in a lot of the different areas in town, including this one. The report ended with a lot of recommendation to address the high-water table and how to deal with drainage water. And you know how that issue is in Captain's Village and, and also it's in this part of the town as well. The Zoning Board of Appeals has not adopted any of the recommendations from that report, to my knowledge. Planning Board has never asserted them. Second, many of the recommendations are for the town to address flooding in these areas through a series of drainage, storage facilities, and recharge areas. In this particular neighborhood, in this report, the recommendation was to install 18 new catch basins and to buy three undeveloped lots and one house lot to increase the off-street storage for the 2002 cost of $992,000.
They didn't buy the lots?
They didn't buy the lots, and if you tried nowadays, you'd be lucky to get two of them for that price. The total project that they, in this report, was $7.5 million, and that's in 2002. This was never done, nor zoning regulations adopted to limit the raising, replacing of homes on these lots or to restrict where basements and things like that could go. In flood zones, conservation has limited jurisdiction here. But in this case, the flood zone, it's a special flood zone, only affects the corner of this property.
The northwest corner.
Correct. Right up here, just this little corner here, where the driveway's coming out anyway.
You referenced two letters?
Yes.
I had Mary Butler.
Well, there was, there was another submission of the report itself, which I have.
Oh.
Yeah, so. I don't know if this was part of the study or not, but there is a list of budding property owners in that packet that was submitted, including Ms. Butler, Mr. Warnock, and Mr. Ebert's property, which indicates that their properties are, quote, "known to have seasonal water flooding issues in basement," close quotes. This issue is entirely due to the high-water table that they're having. It's not anything to do with McNeil's property or the replacement of that property. Doesn't work like a boat splashing water around into the neighbor's yards. He's also concerned about the water flow from the McNeil's property onto Ms. Butler's property. But as you can see from those pictures, their lot is raised up at least three feet above the McNeil's property. I don't think that the concern is real. In fact, the McNeils would have the more of the concern of the water artificially draining from that lot back onto their property. The arguments in this, in that letter are without merit. And the project presented is in no way, nor based on any factual data detrimental to the neighborhood, much less substantially more detrimental. The petitioners, in this case, share that frustration of those abutters about the water table issues that plague these properties. Um, the petitioners, in this case, share that frustration of those abutters about the water table issues that plague these properties. However, they have not caused the issue, nor will they exacerbate the problem with this new home. Um, the fact that nineteen years have passed without the implementation of the recommendations in that's two thousand and three or two thousand and two study suggests that the town rejected them or found them unrealistic, or probably more likely, too costly. In any event, the petition can only abide by the zoning bylaw, which has not been amended to include these recommendations. In this case, on these facts with this plan, this is, um, a very, very reasonable plan. I think we have had a lot of raise and replaces in our day. This one meets, um, almost every bulk requirement except for that side setback, which they're improving. Um, and if they brought it back another five feet, if that was possible, we'd be doing it by right. So, uh, based on those facts, um, we'd like to, uh, ask the board for its vote tonight. If you have any questions, um, as I indicated, Mr. Gonzo's is here, uh, and the McNeil's are here as well. So thank you.
Thank you. Just for your information, this photo is exhibit one. This photo is exhibit two.
Yep.
And this three. Okay?
Got it.
All right. Uh, let's see who'd like to start. How about you, Mr. Martin?
Um, I, I guess I'd have to say I agree with most everything Mr. Tardif is saying. This is a, a fairly moderate raise and replace compared to what we usually see. Um, nothing is becoming any more non-conforming. The, uh, the sideline setback's going to be better than it was. Yeah, there's a little more coverage and so forth. And I understand the neighborhood concerns relative to drainage. There is a water problem there and has been. As a matter of fact, I'm, I'm wondering if the raise at, uh, the height, that the house is going to be further with a full basement, whether that's still going to be all right. I guess the engineering has been done to show that it will be.
Yeah, the, the base.
I've seen a lot of houses in that neighborhood with some pumps.
Yeah, it'll be above the, the flood zone.
All right. Uh, you know, I think, uh, with the house next door being so far away and actually higher than the existing, um, elevation of this property now. In fact, it's a fairly decent sized lot. None of the houses are that quick, uh, that close. Uh, even doing a new septic system here would also have to be raised as well and would, would, uh, which they would be allowed one way or another. And that would be a gradient issue as well. So, I mean, I don't, uh, I don't, I don't see any problem. Looks like a nice house. It's a, uh, I think it's a nice addition to the neighborhood. And I don't, uh, I would like to, and they're getting rid of the encroachment of the driveway that is there now. And I, uh, I think it's a perfectly logical use. And I don't, can't see it adding to any of the water table problems. A water table problem is a water table problem. Drainage from the site, again, I don't think it's going to go anywhere but down to the street and areas that are, um, lower. And it seems to me like the neighbors are just as high. So I don't, I don't see that the issues raised are going to be a big concern. So I, I think it's a logical, uh, request.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Mr. Frapery.
Um, I, I agree that it's going to, looks like it's going to be a fairly nice replacement for the house and it fits in the neighborhood. I did a couple of questions. Just, how big is the basement today and what's it going to be afterwards? I might have missed that.
Yeah, the, the base, there's a full basement on.
Right, and that center section.
On that side, and there's a crawl space on the other side. This is going to be a full basement except for under the driveway and garage, I believe. Is the garage going to be?
No.
Slab right there. So, so it's just going to be on the main part of the house.
About the same as the square footage of the first floor.
Be a little bit more, but yeah, the same as the fir-, yeah, the first floor, yes.
Okay. And, um, you're going to remove the cut that's currently on the driveway that you have there? And that seems to be an improvement too, because there was some question, I think, as to whether it overlapped with the neighbor's yard.
Yeah, he's, they've been using it with permission and they're going to remove the, the pavement, will loam and seed that and in the season and get that taken care of.
Solve that issue if, if there was one. Currently on the, the building that faces the west side, um, the current building, does that have any windows on that side at all today?
Currently?
Yes.
How many?
There's, uh, two, two, I believe. Do the face.
Two, that face currently, so.
So it's not really any change there.
Not really.
Okay, that's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Igo.
Um, no questions. I would, uh, excuse me, echo Mr. Martin's comments. Uh, and, and what I would add to it is, as the board is aware, we've got a corner lot here. And, uh, we've always given some deference to corner lots because they're very tough to fit houses on because you have two fronts and two sides. And meeting that thirty-foot setback on those two sides can oftentimes be difficult. I look at where this particular house is sited and I see all three sides are meeting. Uh, it appears the front setbacks are meeting. Uh, the side setback, uh, one of them is well within the limits. And the one in question, as I see, as Mr. Tardif has, uh, represented, is decreasing the encroachment from nine seven and they're increasing it now to ten feet. So, um, and, and as my understanding, I believe, is they're decreasing the number of bedrooms. Um, I, I would just say, and again echoing Mr. Martin's, uh, comments, you know, I, I do think they meet the criteria of the bylaw. I certainly don't see this as being substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, and I think it's in keeping with the neighborhood. So, uh, while we're not in the discussion phase right now, I, I really do see them meeting the bylaws. So I plan on supporting this petition. That's all, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I, I'm going to wait till the end to say whether I agree that, or not agree with the consensus. But I did go through, uh, the zoning bylaws, trying to find where we have any control over the determination of residential drainage. I see where, if it's in the APD, we do, but this isn't in the APD. I see that this problem has existed for quite a while, and the town is aware of it, has done studies, commissioned studies, probably cost a lot of money. And here we are with no solution to the poor, to the problem for the poor, uh, members, the, uh, people that are but this, uh, this, uh, street. It's outrageous that that water, uh, rises to that level. I think we've actually dealt with another, uh, house down in that area. I may be wrong. It may be another road, but I thought it was right in this area, uh, that, uh, the drainage was also a problem then. But I don't see where we have any purview to require it. There's going to be a septic system that's going to be installed, right?
Yes.
And so that septic system is going to be required to percolate down, uh, fluids and, and the liquids as it comes in and at an appropriate rate. Uh, if it's clay for twenty feet down, they're going to probably make you remove that clay for twenty feet down. Uh, come up with some other system that doesn't allow for any leakage from your property. As a matter of right, you have, well, except for the fact that it's a non-conforming lot. Uh, if that went to fifteen feet, you'd have a right to go to twenty-five percent lot coverage. So, I don't know. I'm going to hold my thoughts on, uh, whether I'm going to support it or not till after we hear from the public. Does anybody care to speak in favor of this petition? If so, please come to our microphone and identify yourself. Is there anybody at home? Does anybody care to speak in opposition to this petition? If so, please come to the microphone. You need to tell us who you are and where you live.
My name is William Warnock. I live at forty-nine Anastasia Road.
All right, William, thank.
And I have, I have mixed reviews. I think the building is going to look very good. You're a hundred percent correct. I think he, he has a right to his property and he should, you know, he, he's been talking about this for nineteen years. He deserves to, you know, have his piece. I'm just concerned that we have an area that floods. And I just think if you, we just want to be, um, heard that if you're digging a basement any bigger, I just want to know where the water's going to go. That's all. That's my only concern is on the recommendations that, um, that study was done. There was stuff implemented. There was eighteen drains put in. That helped a lot. Okay, so, um, you guys do have the information?
Yeah, the study and the photos and all.
Correct. And.
And we've received.
We're just concerned.
To this hearing, so we, I'm sure we all, each of us.
We're just concerned, I'm just concerned about if, how big is the basement is going to be? How many more square feet is the basement? I'm just concerned that on the recommendations on the study, it said that the recommendations say that make sure that you, um, don't, that you're above the water table. The water table varies from two feet to five feet. It's a seasonal problem. And we just want to be heard. We just want to make sure that it's, I want to make sure that the project's done right. That's, that's all. I mean, I, I get flooded, you know, several times a year, and I just don't want to get any more water. That's all my, I am asking just to be heard that we're not gonna, you know, if we make a mistake, there's no turning back. I just want to make sure all our, you know.
We understand.
Look that. That's it.
Tell you something. I, I read an article today that indicated that the seasonal water, uh, heights is a thing of the past in most locations around the country. And I bet dollars to donuts, you had a lot of water in that, that area in, uh, January and now into February, didn't you? Just like the rest of us in Yarmouth.
You know, my personal opinion is.
No, no, I'm just asking, did you have a lot of water over there in the street?
No, not really.
It's a pretty wet January and February.
Correct, correct. You, this, this problem usually happens around Easter. And I, and I do believe that the tide cycle has something to do with it because the ocean pushes back the, the water table. So sometimes there's three, there's, there's three inches of rain and I'm like, wow, I can't believe it. We didn't get, we didn't get flooded. This is unbelievable. And then I look and it says low tide, you know, the storm was in a low tide. But when it's in a high tide, I believe that's when we get whacked. I think it has a lot to do with it. So I'm just concerned that the project doesn't, um, interfere with our water. That's, that's all. I mean, he's entitled to do what he wants. He, you know, he, he's earned it. But I'm just concerned, very, very concerned, because I'm tired of getting flooded. I don't want to add any more water. That's all I'm asking.
We're just kind of repeating ourselves now. So if you have something new, I'm happy.
No, that, that, that's it.
Okay. Does anybody else care to speak in opposition to the, uh, to the petition? And tell us when you get there, please, who you are and what your address is.
There's someone on.
Yeah, my name is Bob Ebert and I live at forty-three Anastasia Road. Uh, like Mr. Warnock, I don't have a, a, a problem with the project itself, other than the water problem. We flood out several times a year. The, the project looks like a great project. Who wouldn't welcome that? But I'm worried about the, until you've come home to eighteen inches of water in your basement, I don't think you'd have a concern about the water table. One of the recommendations on that Norfolk Ram Group engineering report was that homes in that fifty-four acre, is it acres? Be built without basements, probably because of the displacement of the water. And I just want to make sure we know where that displacement is going before it happens. And to be recorded as, as having an, an issue with it, unless there isn't a problem. And I won't dwell on everything else that we've already discussed. But, uh, we do have a severe water problem down there. Those pumps are going quite often. And there's so much water in the streets during the season. I, I think it comes close to being a health problem. There's growth in it. There's so much water in the side of the streets. There's actually some type of fungus. I don't know if it's a fungus or a weed or what. But there's, there's so much, there are so many pumps going during the season. So that's the only concern.
Well, thank you very much. Does anybody else care to speak in opposition to the petition? If so, come to the microphone. We see none. Now, we have received.
Sorry, we have one online.
Oh, you do? Okay, go ahead, please. Yeah?
Actually, we have two online now.
Who is it?
Uh, David Butler.
Two now online.
Okay. Go ahead, David, please, and tell us what you'd like to tell us. You have to unmute yourself.
Oh, sorry. Can you hear me now?
I can hear you now.
Mike, yep, can you hear me? Oh, are you talking to me? Okay, my name is David Butler. I'm the, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Um, my name is David Butler. I'm the son of Mary Butler, a Director Butter to this project. Uh, I have a couple of concerns. Uh, first is that the full letter that we submitted was not read into the record by the chair. It was allowed to be picked apart by the attorney for the, okay. Okay, well, I'm just stating my concerns at this point. Uh, I would like to counter a couple of points.
You're going to speak to the full contents of that letter? Because if you do, I'm not going to read it into the record. If you're going to speak.
No, I'm going to, I'm going to counter a couple of point. I, I want, I would like to counter what the attorney for the plaintiff said on a couple of, uh, of points in his letter, in the letter, rather. Is that okay?
Yep, yeah. Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Um, so the, as far as, as far as the setbacks, uh, the setback that he, uh, is moving back five inches is on our side of the property. If the piece of property is so big, I don't understand why it can't be moved the full five feet to meet with the side setback. If they're moving at five inches, they presumably could move it five feet. Uh, second is the size of the windows in the family room that they plan to build is that the rear of the proposed dwelling, which looks directly into our backyard, where we currently enjoy privacy with, uh, either a very small window that's not in a main room of the house and will not be the focal point of that room, where it's going to be on either side of a fireplace. Uh, so that does significantly impact our privacy in our backyard that we currently enjoy.
Anything else?
Uh, no, I just look forward to having the entire letter read in, uh, to the record.
Okay, thank you very much. So, uh, from, uh, Ann's mother, um, Mary Butler, who writes a letter dated February eighth. And as follows, I am, I'm, I'm going to leave out a few things, but that's just to move it along. My name is Mary Butler. I own the property at forty-seven Jerusalem Lane. What am I hearing?
There's one more online, but after the letter.
Oh. Please, go ahead with the person online. Whoever's raised their hand, let's promote them in. Maybe the simpler way to do, to do this is to everybody go back to Zoom only. We could control those much better. Promote the person in.
She's in Denise. I.
All right, Denise, you want to tell us what you're?
She's on mute.
What?
She's on mute.
Well, she's got on mute. You, you have to unmute yourself. I don't have my glasses on. Is she still?
Yeah, still on mute.
There you go.
Okay.
Go ahead, please. Tell us what you'd like to tell us, Denise.
Well, we, we've been, uh, owners there and we've been flooded. We are on a flood plan. And what is going to happen to us? And, and not just my property, but Barackis's next door that we have gone into our cellars and been in three feet of, of water? What are you doing about that?
I'm not doing anything.
Hold on, Department.
Excuse me?
Yeah, it, it, we don't do that. That'd be the.
Your, your water commission and the historical, um, or the water table should be looking into this. Our whole neighborhood is in a flood plan. We're the only ones in our neighborhood paying a flood insurance. So explain that to me. When they take a, a, of the property, put it down and don't look at the rest of the neighborhood, where is the water going? Explain that to me.
I can't.
Well, you shouldn't be.
I can't. And the board is not concerned with it because we can't. Boy, can't, and the board is not concerned with it because we can't control it. It's a matter for the Department of Public Works. And every house on that street causes water to go into the road. And this is just replacing a house that already exists.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yes, Chairman, we have one more.
Okay. Please promote them in.
Mary Butler is here, she has to unmute herself.
Who's this?
Mary, you have to unmute.
Apologies, sorry about that, work, can you hear us?
Yes.
You're all right.
I'm Kelly, I'm Mary's daughter. Uh, we just had one more question as to what the attorney mentioned. He said that the 41 Jerusalem is three feet lower than 47 Jerusalem. And in fact, it looked like from the plans that the new house is gonna be raised up about two more feet. So there's not so much, there, there's not that discrepancy anymore of the three feet between the two properties. It's only going to be one foot, which again, concerns us with the water.
Okay, can you speak to that? Do you, do you have the domain?
Yeah, we're.
The elevations, the elevations on this is 30, it's under 35 feet, right?
Yeah, oh, it's well under 35 feet. So actually, it'll be at 22 feet. The top, just trying to get this, the top of foundation is at 15.5 feet. The garage, um, the slab is at 13.5. So it's, it, it, it's gonna come up a little bit. But if you look at those pictures, you'll see that is a big discrepancy now, so.
But it comes up two feet, right? So it's not gonna be the discrepancy that it is now when you build the new house. It's going to be one foot.
Yeah.
Okay, so the windows will directly look into the backyard of 47 Jerusalem.
Okay. Anything else that's not contained in the letter that you'd like to talk about?
No, I think the letter is, is pretty all inclusive of our concerns.
I thought so too. That's why I didn't think anybody needed to speak. But I will read the letter in whole because apparently there were things that weren't containing it in your dialogue with the board. So it's, my name is Mary Butler. I own the property at 47 Jerusalem Lane. I'm writing to inform the board of my opposition to the petition concerning the raise and replace at 41. I urge the board to consider my strong opposition to the following variances requested from the board. Side setback 15 feet required, 10 feet proposed. New structure requires 25,000 square foot lot minimum. That's not accurate. New lot frontage requirement of 150 feet. That is not accurate. It's not accurate because these lots have existed before those dimensional requirements came into being or with the subject of a subdivision plan that was reviewed, vetted, and approved. My reasons for my opposition are detailed below. The requested side setback variance proposed 10 foot would seriously inhibit my level of privacy. The proposed family room is designed with two windows on the exterior wall facing my property, situated on either side of a fireplace that will be a focal point of this new room. My property and family's enjoyment of will be adversely impacted by this variance. The privacy we currently enjoy will be stripped due to the proximity and elevation of the proposed home. Larger and more elevated due to proposed site elevation changes and increased foundation height, uh, two and one half feet. The windows of the proposed home will greatly impact the privacy and enjoyment of our property. The proposed home exceeding the square footage of the existing home and with the addition of a full basement raises significant water intrusion concerns for all of butters. The neighborhood in which our homes are located has a very high water table. Supporting this assertion, the town of Yama commissioned a study titled Study of Groundwater Related to Flooding Problems. The study was proposed after severe flooding in 2003 that caused significant damage to several areas of town, including our neighborhood. Presented to the town in July 2004, it outlined Area 7 Anastasia, 54 acres of flood prone, prone, excuse me, area, including my property at 47. The study concluded that the area was rated high risk for flooding. This conclusion is buttressed by the FEMA map, which shows the portions of my property, the McNeil property and several other properties as being in a special flood hazard area. The 2004 study recommended the following relevant steps to establish a zoning requirement, that all new basements be constructed above seasonal high groundwater. The solution was proposed for the Anastasia area because of its designation as high on the severity rating as it pertains to flooding. While this was not adopted, the findings cast the looming question over the ability for the property to be constructed as proposed without adversely impacting the water table and causing damage to abutting properties. Another solution recommended in the study was the purchase of home, a lot of, for detention. I don't know if that's, maybe that's sick. But in any event, absent this corrective action in the 18 years since, the town of Yama should require any new structure on this lot should be required to demonstrate a mitigating F effect on stormwater runoff and groundwater displacement consistent with these concerns. The proposed full basement replacing and expanding the existing crawl space is contrary to the recommendations made by the 2004 study commissioned by the town of West Yama. The McNeils tacitly confirm this, these groundwater concerns as the plans show raising the new structure as much as two to three feet above the existing structure's elevation to counter water tables levels less than eight feet, 90 inches below the existing home's elevation. While their home would likely benefit from improved construction methods and may not have water infiltration issues, existing butters do not share that luxury. I fear that displaced water will end up on my property and likely in my basement. The proposed foundation drain will surely move water away from the property. However, the increased footprint means less area of absorption into the ground. The proposed reduced side setback puts runoff even closer to my property. It is important that I assert to the board I am not seeking to stop redevelopment or be unreasonable. To the contrary, I have extended significant courtesies to the McNeils along, allowing them to use a portion of my property as a driveway for years. The plans indicate the McNeils intend to remove a portion of the driveway as part of their new construction. In an effort to resolve our concerns in good faith without burdening this board, my son spoke with Mr. McNeil on February 8 about restoration of the driveway area and other concerns in hopes of a compromise. Rather than listening, Mr. McNeil dismissed our concerns entirely and made veiled threats to take a portion of our land he had used as a driveway, presumably a misguided attempt at citing Squatter's rights and claiming he would take it by eminent domain. In conclusion, I ask the board to carefully consider the language of zoning by law 104.3.2, subparagraph 2, with the special permit is being requested on them. It reads in part that a variance, well, the difference for everybody's knowledge at home between a variance and a special permit. But I'll read the letter as it's presented. So this is a special permit for a raise and replace. That, that's the criteria we have to consider. Now, where was I?
It reads in part.
It reads in part that a variance shall be granted if it is determined that such alteration, extension, or raise and replacement will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than is the existing nonconforming structure. For the reasons outlined above, I believe that the new home as proposed with side setback variance poses significant detriment to my property. Further, the expansion in, in, in imperviable area, a 6.7% increase in groundwater displacement constitutes significant risk to several neighborhood properties, including my own. I respectfully request the board with these concerns in consideration to deny the special permit sought by Mr. McNeil for their property at 41. Further, I request that any plans submitted should be made to conform with required setbacks, adequately demonstrate sufficient stormwater management practices subject to peer review and confor, uh, conformed to the recommendations made by the 2004 groundwater study referenced above and attached here too. Thank you for your time and consideration. This was presented to us, uh, and well in advance of this hearing and has been made available to all members online. I don't know where anybody's taken the time to read a 2004 study that wasn't adopted, but that, that's the letter. So, does anybody at home, uh, in Zoom now have their hand raised? One last time. We now close it to the public input on the petition. We open it up to board discussion and deliberations. We're not moving anywhere, do we?
All right, here we go. I muted myself, I'm sorry. Can you hear me now? I believe you can.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Um, I, I do believe that the petitioner has met the criteria of the bylaw. As I indicated before and was addressed earlier by Mr. Martin, I can understand the neighbor's concerns relative to the drainage issues in the neighborhood. And I'm well familiar with that because I have lived in that area for a long time myself. But that is not, as the chairman is correct, within the purview of this board, it would be directed at another part of the town. Um, again, we've had these issues relative to corner lots, so we do give the deference with them. And I understand the concern about being the 10 feet from the neighbor's lot. Uh, however, if I do look at this floor plan, that side of the structure is not the side that anybody's really gonna be looking out of. Their lot, their house actually faces, the back of their house faces out onto another side of the property and not the side that abuts, the, uh, the butter, the concern to butter. So just to reiterate, I do believe that it's not gonna be substantially more detriment, detrimental to the neighborhood. They do meet the criteria of the bylaw. And I am going to support this and I urge the rest of the board to support it as well. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Igo. Mr. Frapri.
I guess I'm, I understand the, the neighbor's concerns about the water. I have the same issue in my neighborhood. But it's, it comes and goes with the, with the tides and it comes and goes with, with the, the rain that comes in. So we have times a year when we have wet basements and, and other times when we don't. I don't, I don't know that one, one basement is going to change that very much in this situation, but, but I do understand their concern. It, as far as the, the house goes, I, I think it's a, it's a very nicely done house. It's well designed. I don't see that the, the, it, it's gonna be moved back to less of a variance than it was in the past, which is always something that we're looking for as far as improvements go. They're taking out the one cut to put a new cut in as far as the driveways are concerned. And, uh, I, I think it's a nice, nice addition and fits in the neighborhood. So I, I would be supportive of, of this as it's presented.
Thank you very much. Mr. Martin.
Yeah, I would agree with the statements made by my, by the last two members of the board. You know, I just, I, I, again, I understand their concerns too, but I, I, I can't see that just adding a basement here. And there's already a partial basement, basement as well. I mean, this has to go through Board of Health concerns. It has to deal with the Building Department. Typically, they're gonna also look at anything in terms of making sure that any drainage anyway stays on this property and, and doesn't affect the immediate butters. To tell one, one party, and this house is pretty much the biggest on the, biggest lot in the neighborhood anyways, that they can't build a new house that, that goes from three bedrooms to two bedrooms, just because it's gonna have to be raised a little bit. It would have to be raised a little bit anyways these days, probably. I don't, I don't know that the basement really even comes into play that much. So I just, I just can't see it making that much of a difference. We've given relief on, on much, uh, on other sites that require much more relief, actually. We're really just talking about a small sideline of relief is the only reason you're here to begin with. And that's being improved from what's there. And there's a stone retaining wall going in as well, which should also help in terms of pushing any drainage from that area, I would think toward the street. I, I just can't, uh, I, I know there's a big problem in the neighborhood and, but I can't see that, uh, this house being, uh, having that sideline setback difference and putting a basement in, which we really, I don't think we have any say on anyways, has any, any effect.
Thank you very much. I, my wife and I enjoy three acres near wetlands. Our basement is 12 feet above the, uh, the high tide zone determination by FEMA. And we still get water in the basement with that little lot coverage of a house on the over three acres. So it, this is Cape Cod. The water table is high for everybody. It's only gonna get higher, ladies and gentlemen. My property that is now not beachfront, it might be very shortly, be in my children's lifetime. And, you know, it's, it's a shame. It's a sin, it's awful, but it's a, it's a townwide problem. I, I, I think that I can point to many, many streets that retain water without runoff, but very slowly. And I feel your pain, I truly do. But I don't think that it's within our purview. Specifically, 104.3.2, which is what this petition is being brought under, speaks to a special permit when somebody goes to raise and replace and alter or extend a nonconforming, a structure on a nonconforming lot. And it says it will be granted by this board if the new structure, it will comply or conform to all by law requirements, which we know this one does not. But it also goes on to say, does not otherwise in, increase the nonconforming nature of the structure. This decreases it. And moreover, I agree with the comments made by Mr. Martin, Mr. Frapri, and Mr. Igo that this will not create any undue hazard nuisance nor congestion which we can control within our purview. You've met the requirements of the bylaw. If people wanna petition the town to ask for, to do something about drainage out there or get together as a neighborhood and try to figure something out, more power to you. But we can't deal with, with this board. So we thank you very much. Let's do a roll call vote if somebody's prepared to make a motion.
I will move to approve petition number 4935 as, as requested.
Second. Sorry.
Second.
Mr. Frapri seconds that motion. And that's without condition, is that right?
Without condition, Jim.
We'll do a roll call vote on that. Mr. Igo?
Aye.
Mr. Frapri?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
And Mr. DeYoung, aye, that carries four to zero. Thank you very much for coming. A decision will ultimately be filed with the town clerk's office. 20 days must elapse after that decision is filed. That's a technical period. If somebody wishes to appeal, they can appeal during that period. Absent any appeal, that special permit will need to be brought to the registry of deeds and recorded with proof of its recordation back to our board. Okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We never thank enough, by the way. You're so lucky to have our board, uh, blessed by Selena. Number three is that a petition 4938, the Amy McCasick, Isaac Reconcilable Trust, Amy McCasick being the petitioner for property located at 24 Charles Street, South Yama, Mass. That property being in the zoning district R40. Our applicant seeks a special permit and/or variance under zoning bylaws 104.3.2 to allow the existing building and deck height to be increased two feet from existing elevation. Well, we know Mr. Healy's here. Good evening, Mr. Healy.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, members. For the record, my name is Kieran Healy. I'm a land surveyor with BSC Group, representing the owner who was with us tonight, Amy McCasick. And also with us is Eric Tully from ERT Architects. We are here filing under 104.3.2 to elevate the house and garage within the northerly side setback and to elevate the deck the same on the southerly setback. Um, a little history on this property. The reason we're here is that Mr. McCasick went to remove an existing oil tank that was in there. When the oil tank was removed, an oil spill was found underneath the tank. As a result, um, the garage needs to be removed and pushed north. The house needs to be removed and pushed south, or east in this case. And the area underneath the building is to be excavated and the contaminated soil is to be removed. Um, a new foundation. A new foundation is to be put back in its place. And the house is to be set back down on its location. It's an extensive project to remove this oil. And as a result, we are looking to elevate the foundation two feet to get some more usable space in the crawl space. Right now, the headroom is limited, and there are pipes that are low inside that area. So, this would allow us to use that section of the basement in a better manner. The plans for the existing house, as you can see here, is that the main body of the house is much lower than the garage with the room over the top. This is the existing house right here. This is the garage with the room over the top. We are looking to put in this full basement. And one of the thoughts was to, if we could go down two more feet as opposed to going up, that was not really going to work because this house right now, the slab is right at the flood zone elevation. If we were to go down, we would go into the flood zone, and that would cause more problems than we want to deal with. You know, literally not allowed to do that by the building code. The current street elevation is at elevation 27, and the existing ground adjacent to the building is much lower than that. So, even though the building is 22 feet 11 and 1/4 above the ground, by the building code, it's only a 15 and 1/2-foot building because of the way the ground adjacent to the building is so much lower than the street based on the way the bylaw is written. We are looking to lift the garage and the house two feet. And that's the entire project is, from the zoning point of view, is we're looking to lift it two feet. If I could bring your attention to this plan here. Couple of ground strips on the plan. This is the area in question that is within the setback. You see the northerly side right here? This portion of the house and this portion of the deck that's on this side. Again, purely to elevate everything two feet above what we have. The proposed garage ridge will be 24 and 1/4 inches above the new garage slab, which is an elevation of 20.5. Based on the code, the building height for this highest point on this section would be listed as 17 and 1/2 feet. Even though it's taller, because again, the location of the house and this having a negative slope from the street, it's only considered to be 17 and 1/2. Obviously, the building itself is going to be 24 feet and 1/4 inches above the existing grade. Even that is still well below the required building height. Other than that, I'd be glad to answer any questions. Mr. Tully, Mr. McIsaac, and myself.
Thank you very much. Let's start with Mr. Frapery. Any questions of the petitioner's representative?
I had a chance to walk through, so I understand the height issue in the basement. I was there one day when I think you were having, the front deck was being torn out. Ready to move the building. I was a little confused when you were describing the project. You said you were going to move the barn and move the house, put in a new foundation, and then move the house back. Is the barn going to stay moved, or is it going to go back to its original location?
It's going to go back in the same location it is today, just two feet.
And you'll have the same connector? It'll be a little breezeway between the house and the garage?
Correct. That will be there. And also, this section right here will be a stairway down into, in between the garage and the house. I've got a shaded area on the plans.
Okay.
That will be a stairway that wraps around and goes down to the basement area.
So, basically, it's a foundation. Walls will be two feet higher. And the house will be sitting on top of it. And you're going to add a wraparound deck instead of just a deck on the side, which is mostly on the side, and that's the intent?
Right. Partial wraparound. It doesn't wrap around on the northerly side.
Just wraps across the front.
Yep.
Face in the water.
Face in the water, yes.
I don't have any other questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martin.
Just humor me a little bit. What, the reason for the variance of special permit is coming under what section and why? I'm just wondering why, just going up two feet, you even need to be here.
We did.
You probably wondered the same thing.
With the building inspector. And the building inspector said that because we are elevating the building, even though it's two feet, because the building is within the setback, the bylaw specifically says that any increase in height triggers the special.
Okay. So, it's a, that two-feet increase in height because it's within the buffer zone?
Yes.
Yeah. Within the sidelines, within the setbacks. Okay. Certainly seems logical to me. I don't see any issue with it. It's a large lot, and going two feet higher is still a lot lower than some of the newer houses around there now. And so, and it's accomplishing a problem, which certainly sounds like a nightmare to me at the same time where you're cleaning up the oil situation. And while doing it, it certainly makes sense to make that lower-level space more livable so I can understand your needs and requests completely. And you're still way below the maximum height, and I don't see that this is, does anything but meet the criteria we need to say okay to.
Thank you, Mr. Igo.
No questions, just a comment. I agree with everything Mr. Martin said. I think it's really a de minimis request to hear technically, because as Kieran just pointed out, they raised the building, raised the height, so it triggers a need for a special permit. Certainly no increase in any nonconformity, but for a little increase in height. They're staying within their own footprint. So, really, again, I think it's a de minimis request, and I'm going to support it. I would recommend the rest of the board support it as well. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. So, we have the Conservation Commission weighing in on this. And it says as follows. A memo from Kelly Grant, the conservation administrator, says that at its 121621, is that a typo? Is that an accurate date? 21?
Yeah, probably is.
Yeah, last month, two months ago.
Okay. Of course. Jeez, what am I thinking?
Don't push.
The office here, not eat dinner. I guess that's it. At its 121621 meeting, the Conservation Commission reviewed a request for amended order of conditions to allow for the lifting and temporary move of the house, removal of all contaminated soil from beneath the house and within the existing foundation and new foundation walls within the footprint of the existing foundation. The work originally approved under the order of conditions was an addition, deck, and new septic system. The commission voted to approve the proposed work per site plan of land 24 Charles Street and South Yonath. Amended order of conditions, Kieran Healy, PLS BSC Group, dated 12321. And the new foundation for existing structure, McIsaac Property Plan and Notes, Scott Orlovsky. Okay. Apex Engineering, 121621. So, you know, clearly, if there's a grant here, it will be with the same conditions of that of the conservation, okay? Should it be granted? Let's see if anybody in our audience cares to speak in favor of the petition. If so, please come to the microphone. Let's hear what you have to say. Seeing none.
We do have one online, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, we do? In favor?
I believe so, yes.
Okay. Let him speak. Hello? Who is it?
David Bennett. He's coming in now.
Mr. Bennett?
I don't think it's opened yet.
There we go.
Hello, Mr. Bennett?
He's still, the mic's muted.
Good evening. I really don't have anything to add. I'm the LSP of record that is directing the cleanup of the oil that spilled underneath the house. And I think Kieran did a very good job in representing what we did. You know, the aspects of the special permit. I just want to state that Amy McIsaac has been victimized by this situation, and this is a very aggressive soil removal to eliminate a problem that I think is in the benefit and the interest of the neighborhood as well as the town and the water resources that abut this property.
Thank you very much. Was that it?
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Have a good evening, please. Does anybody else have their hand raised? Does anybody in our audience care to speak in opposition to this petition? If so, please come right up to the microphone. Let us hear what you have to say. Somebody leave their, oh, that's.
Hi, I'm Debbie Leahy. I live next door. I'm not opposed to this at all.
Could you please tell me your name?
Debbie Leahy.
Thank you, Debbie.
We're not opposed to this at all. But could you give me some clarification? If you're raising the structures two feet, does that mean the land is coming up two feet as well?
Can you speak to that?
The plan wasn't to raise the ground around the building, other than at the garage. Right now, there's some flooding that heads down into the garage, so we would be capturing that. But the intent around the rest of the building is to maintain the same grade that's there.
Conservation required that, didn't it?
Conservation required, yeah. At Coastal Bank, there is Coastal Bank out there, so there were some issues with dealing with that. So, that was all resolved.
In the original grant statement of conditions.
The original order of conditions, and then the amended followed.
Sure, okay.
That would be our only concern where we live next door. If you're going up two feet and we're down here.
Yeah.
Once again, it's a water runoff issue.
Yeah, sure, sure. But they're not changing the grade at all.
We wanted clarification for.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So, we now close it to the public input on this petition. We open it up to board discussion deliberations. How's that? I think you clearly meet the criteria for the grant of a special permit. I note that we're also going to need to vote on the withdrawal of a variance request. And so, I'm assuming you'll ask us to withdraw that should we grant the special permit, but without prejudice. Is that right, Mr. Healy? All right. I think it meets the criteria. I don't think a lot more need be said. So, Mr. Frapery, what do you?
I'm ready to make a motion to accept, so.
All right. Well, why don't we just see if Mr. Martin wants to chime in, or Mr. Igo wants to chime in? If you don't, Mr. Frapery's prepared to make a motion to approve the petition.
I don't have anything to add. It's a logical request and isn't causing any issues to the grade of the landscape and just adding a couple of feet to the structure, which is already well under the maximum allowed. So, and it doesn't really affect the sideline borders by dealing with a couple of feet going up on those areas that are closer than, well, actually, when these houses were built, it was probably six feet. But so, now it's 20 feet. And even then, there's still, there's pretty good side yard, so I have no problem.
Mr. Igo?
Yes, just to reiterate what I said before, Mr. Chairman, I do believe that the petitioner meets the criteria of the bylaw. It certainly won't be more substantially detrimental than what's there now. They're only raising it two feet. They're cleaning up a, clearly a hazard, an environmental hazard. So, they're doing a benefit to their neighbors, to themselves, and obviously to the town. I would certainly request that we incorporate any conditions that the Conservation Commission may impose order conditions. But they're going to have to abide by that anyway, so I don't even know if we have to make that a condition. But again, I plan on supporting it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We had Mr. Frapery in the middle of making a motion. What would you like to say, Mr. Frapery?
I'd just like to make a motion to accept this petition as presented with no conditions. I think the conservation one is.
Could we reference?
Yeah.
Would you be all right referencing that as a condition?
Sure. That's fine, too.
All right.
And I'll second that.
Any discussion by the board members before moving along to a vote and hearing none? Mr. Igo?
Aye.
Mr. Frapery?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. DeYoung? Aye, that carries. So, the decision will be drafted, it will be filed with the town clerk's office. As you know, 20 days must elapse before that special permit is then granted. We're granting it as a special permit. And once that is granted in full with no appeal, you need to bring it to the registry of deeds, record it, and return proof to Ms. Lilla. Okay? Thank you.
And variance? Like, are we getting rid of the variance?
Oh, yeah. Who's prepared to make a motion on the variance?
I'll move it. That we remove the request for the variance under that petition.
Second.
Without prejudice, if I could.
What?
Without prejudice, if I could.
Without prejudice. No, this is what he said.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear it.
Well, you know, you and I are getting older, and I forgot my hearing aids tonight. So, maybe you need them.
I'm not there yet, Mr. Chairman. Not yet. Use.
You're actually right, I didn't.
All right. Motion has been made to allow the withdrawal of the variance request without prejudice. Mr. Igo?
Aye.
Mr. Frapery?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. DeYoung? Aye, that carries four to zero. A decision will be drafted, as I say, and presented. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, members.
Wonderful night, please.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for your patience. Now, before we go to the next matter, I'm just going to ask, it's our final matter, and I'm just going to ask, are both legal counsel here who have written to the board?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Both legal counsel?
I believe so.
We don't have.
No.
I want to disadmit it is opposition.
Okay. If I'm going to do that, I'd like to take a five-minute break, okay? I'm not trying to hold you up. I'd love to get to you, but I think this is going to take a little time. And I'd like to just get up and move a little bit, okay? Thank you. Is that all right with the board members?
Sure.
Thank you.
You need a snack, by the way? Well, you brought snacks if you want snacks.
Yeah. Hey, listen, you.
How you doing, sir?
Good.
How goes it?
Played golf today.
Play golf? Oh, it's a good day for golf, actually.
Yeah. We just avoided a little few snowbanks.
That's all right. Nice day for that.
Yeah.
And why not? Well, we're supposed to have winter golf all winter long. So, you should.
I don't know if you can hear audio during this, so I left the mics off right now.
Oh, okay. So, we better. Are they still on these at night? Do you go away at all in the winter? Do you go away at all in the winter, or do you stay? Yeah, I go back and forth to Florida. That's why I missed a couple of meetings. Okay. I might miss the next one, too.
You always dial in?
I can't, yeah. Problem is, last time I had a conflict with a dinner engagement down there.
Okay.
And they're having a whole neighborhood party on 24, which is next week. Because I was even thinking of coming home for it, but I gotta stay for that. That's still the night.
The next means the 24?
Yeah.
I'm going the next day.
Where are you heading?
To the waters.
Yeah, go ahead. It's compliments of the town.
I appreciate it. Yeah, I made it down for just a week.
Excuse me. To Florida? Yeah.
Get a little bit of warmth in the bones.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, we were here quite a bit in January, and January was, it was pretty lousy there.
Yeah, that's what I heard. Down to 30.
It was down to 34. Yeah.
I like that. Probably the plants don't like it either.
Have enough ultimates, do you?
I mean, we have four.
Four?
But they're just busy, so.
It's for ultimates, I think?
Yeah. I think they're gonna, they put it out there, they're looking for interest from the boards. I think I have to have you sign that absentee member certification.
Oh.
I didn't realize that.
Oh, okay. Yeah, okay.
So, I'll just send it to you via email.[1744.04] So I'll just send it to you via email.
We can say I looked at that.
Yeah, you just have to sign it. We'll get it on record.
I'm familiar with that. I went over it last time.
Yeah.
Even though it was on, but that means.
He may not be here for the next meeting.
Yeah, she knows.
Yeah, so I'll start.
It will be challenged.
Yeah, that's who wants to be here.
Leaving the next morning, but I'll be here.
Okay.
So you just made it.
Thank you.
You changed. I thought we were going to go from Thursday to Thursday.
Well, I'm glad you did.
Friday, we're much better.
Fridays, and that works out. I did. I didn't look at the calendar.
Where are you going?
Just to Florida for.
Just to Florida. It's Florida. That's excellent.
Clear water beach.
Yeah, it's nice.
Nice.
Very nice.
Warm up the body to get through the last couple of months of winter.
Well, today there was hope. Almost got up to 50, yeah.
It's supposed to stay warm through Saturday and then get cold for a few days.
Yeah. We're getting there.
Yeah.
Right, yeah, I do have that.
Thank you all.
Nature calls.
Well, yep. The body needs what it needs. What it craves. Good evening again. This is petition 4934 Elizabeth and Camborian individually and as trustee of the LNK condominium trust that property is located at 177 South Street, South Yarmouth, Massachusetts. The property is in a, of concern tonight, is 181 South Street, South Yarmouth, Mass. Property in an R40 zoning district in Iatherton seeks to overturn the decision of the building commissioner to revoke permit number 21006774. Good evening. Would you identify yourself, please?
Good evening. My name is Doug Troyer. I represent the petitioner, Elizabeth. She goes by Detsy Camborian. She's actually present on Zoom. She's actually out of the state and was only able to attend by Zoom, so fortunately, that is a possibility tonight. As you had indicated, we are here tonight filing a appeal of the November 10, 2021 determination of the building commissioner in which he declined to enforce his zoning bylaw with respect to property located 181 South Street. I want to give you kind of a factual background, just to kind of set the stage. My client and her family has had an ownership interest in the property that now comprises of the LNK condominium since 1963. The property was formerly numbered 179, 180, 181, and 182. And consisted of land on both the west and east side of South Street. The property now that comprises the condominium consists of approximately 25,910 square feet, which is a pre-existing non-conforming lot. The property is located in an RS40 zoning district, which requires a minimum lot size of 40,000 square feet, which this board is aware of. In around 2012, my client decided to submit the property to condominium status. In order to do that, she appeared before this board back in May of 2012, where the board granted a special permit to allow for the recombining of the lots into one lot. She also needed to get a special permit on the same evening from the zoning board of appeals concerning use regulation in which to allow for the conversion of the two existing dwellings that are on the property and one detached garage building and combine the property into a condominium form of ownership. May I approach and provide you with kind of?
We have to keep it, though, okay? Whatever you present.
Absolutely. It's already been submitted. I just for demonstrative purposes.
Thank you. This is already in our packet?
It's already in your packet.
Sure, thank you so much.
Because this is easier to read.
Just kind of explaining the property a little bit. If you look at the first page of the attachment that I just gave you. Lot, the condominium is located on this property here. Lot two is owned by Dr. Askewbar. Lot unit three is owned by my client, which is a garage. It's a five-car garage building. And unit one is owned by another unit owner, which is another single-family dwelling. It's on that. My client owns property directly across the street. There is a, there is a home in front and a main house in the back. The front is, I believe, a single-family dwelling that's rented out. My client lives in the rear of the portion of that. I can approach again. This is actually a new exhibit.
Thank you. We'll call this as an aerial view, huh?
We need to get any, Mr. Igo. Do we need to get any of this to Mr. Igo?
Well, Mr. Igo, are you interested in seeing a projection of this? It's a, it's a.
I'm very familiar with the property. I've been going by it my whole life. I know all about it. Yep.
Me too.
I'm good.
So just to orient the board, on the photograph of which I presented to you, the condominium property is located over in, on the left-hand side of the photograph, on the left-hand side of South Street. Dr. Ascari's property is located down here. The parking, five-car parking garage is located here, and then the other dwelling that's on the condominium property is located to the rear of that. My client's main house is located here, which is closest to the ocean. And then there is a house that directly abuts, that runs horizontal along South Street, in essence, across the street from the condominium. As you can see, any view from the main house is obstructed by looking at the other structure that is on my client's property across the street. And I just wanted to kind of give this board an idea of an aerial view of the property in question.
Thank you.
So subsequent to obtaining those special permits, or actually, within those special permits that were granted by this board back in 2012, there was specifically, it was expressly found that there will be no change to the three existing structures or uses on the land. The structures that were on the land, like as I indicated, there was a single-family structure. There was a five-car garage, and then there was a structure in the rear that basically pursuant to those special permits that was expressly provided there and. Subsequent to obtaining those special permits, my client submitted the property to condominium status. And pursuant to the condominium master deed, it basically says that subject to the provisions set forth below, each owner or occupant shall have the right to place customary outdoor furniture, but no buildings or structures within their exclusive use area except for units one and two, respectively, for future outdoor decks or accessory structures. This is the key point. If allowed by and subject to the Yarmouth zoning bylaw and all other applicable laws, codes, rules, and regulations. My client recognizes that pursuant to the master deed, the owner of the subject property, Dr. Askewbar, may construct an accessory structure within their intended exclusive use area so long as it is in accordance with applicable provisions of the zoning bylaw. In May of 2016, my client conveyed unit two to Dr. Askewbar. Since that time, it's our understanding that he has made certain renovations to unit two, including remodeling a bathroom, replacing the kitchen cabinets, and replacing a second-floor balcony. Such work was undertaken by and pursuant to a building permit in 2017, number 17 hyphen 001366. However, subsequent to the closeout of said building permit, Dr. Askewbar impermissively enclosed the area beneath the balcony to create an interior room. Upon information and belief, such work was unauthorized by the building department, as there's no building permit on file that we were able to locate identifying this. Additionally, it's in violation of the first amended and restated condominium trust, which requires trustee consent to exterior structural addition, alterations, and improvements. No request was requested or obtained. If you look at the first attachment or the first set of documents that I gave you and turn to page three, you will see a photograph that identifies the subject property. On the left is the, is the original single-family home that Dr. Askewbar and his wife currently own. If you see the deck that comes off of that, that was what was constructed after his acquisition of the property back in 2016. If you look underneath, you can see that the area has been fully enclosed in and is basically utilized as part of the home. Our information and belief that was not permitted by the building permit that was issued, that is not what's before this board tonight. I raised that to basically show some of the zoning misbehavior in which has been exhibited by this property owner since his acquiring the property back in 2016. It is our position that at some point in time in September of 2021, my client observed a construction truck delivering wood materials to the site. In September 2021, my client contacted the Yarmouth Building Department to ascertain whether any permit had been issued for any work to be done on the site. Prior to that time period, there was no conversations between my clients and Dr. Askewbar or anyone from Dr. Askewbar's family to the trust seeking permission to construct a structure on the property. This was the first time that my client became aware that there was any construction activity going to be exhibited on that property. It appears that my client, well, it doesn't appear, my client, upon seeing that, went to the building department and determined that that a building permit was issued on May 21, 2001. Building permit was issued to allow the construction of a 14-by-17 shed. Building permit application, unfortunately, upon review of that, which is attached as exhibit is attached as an exhibit to my original submission, basically improperly suggested the condominium property to which they were looking to propose that shed on was compliant with zoning bylaws, when it was actually undersized for an RS zoning district. In particular, the application identifies that the property is in a R25 zoning district. Yeah, R25 zoning districts that this board is aware has a 25-foot, 1,000, 25,000 square foot minimum lot requirement. An RS40 zoning district, which is what this is in, requires a 40,000 square foot. The application also incorrectly identifies Dr. Askewbar's address as 185 South C Avenue of West Yarmouth, which is an address located and associated with a Harried Laird. It's our belief that Mr. Laird's property, which is in 185 South Avenue, is located in town R25, and that may be the reason for the inconsistency in the building permit. But there is no explanation other than the fact that the building permit does indicate that it was R25, and it appears that the building permit was issued based on that information. The property clearly is located in an RS40 zone, according to your zoning map, and is therefore subject to the 40,000 square foot.
You know, you know that we granted a condominium here in 2012, right?
I do understand that. I also understand that the condominium that was granted here is on a lot that is under 40,000 square feet. On September 29, my client, after engaging counsel, filed the original enforcement action to the building commissioner. On November 10, 2021, the building commissioner issued his decision via email providing specifically that while it appears that the 30-day appeal period has lapsed regarding the issues of a building permit, I would like to provide the following information for your records. After review of the special permit relief for the condominium creation, I have determined that the language of the special permit granted specifically stated that there are no new structures proposed. However, the conditions do not prohibit the owner's ability to add an accessory structure or make changes to existing structures. It is our position that the building commissioner's decision finding that solely because accessory structures are permitted within this area and also permitted pursuant to the master deed, that this, this, this shed in which was constructed and granted, granted a building permit were legal. Unfortunately and respectfully, it's our position that you also have to look at the dimensional requirements of the zoning bylaws to determine whether or not a structure can, a new structure can be constructed on an undersized lot. In this situation, that's exactly what the building permit granted, and without being able to seek enforcement, excuse me, without, without seeking relief from this board, as the other applicants have done tonight for their various projects, basically, the building permit was issued in violation of the bylaw. I have read the opposition from Dr. Askewbar's attorney. They have basically indicated that this case should be dismissed based on the 30-day appeal period. And it is our position that their attorney is misreading the law. There is two appeal periods under the law that basically provide for when a person who may be aggrieved by a building permit to basically appeal. The first time period is within 30 days of issuance of the building permit, so long as that person has adequate knowledge or appropriate knowledge in order to basically be able to bring that. The second period is set forth in 4817, which allows an aggrieved person to challenge a building permit in appropriate circumstances when he or she were without notice of the order or decision. We fall into the second category. Specifically, the SJC has held that where an aggrieved party has adequate notice of the building permits issuance, he or she is required to appeal the appropriate zoning board of appeals within 30 days of the permits issuance. However.
What decision was that?
That is Connors versus Anita. It's 460 Mass. 790. It's also citing to Gallivan versus Zoning Board of Appeals of Wesley, 71 Mass. Appeals Court, 850. The SJC in that case also expressly noted that a party may pursue an enforcement action pursuant to general laws, Chapter 48, Section 7, to challenge a building permit in appropriate circumstances, including if the aggrieved party can establish that he or she was without adequate notice of the order or decision. In this case, the opposition has alleged that on or about July 23, 2021, that's when their contractor first arrived at the site with a truck and equipment to start commencement of the site. Building permit was issued on May 25. July 23 is almost two months after the issuance of the building permit. My client's position is that there was no knowledge or any information that would be readily available to her to determine whether or not prior to July 23, 2001, even assuming that that is the actual start date, that my client would have been aware that a building permit would have been issued. It's not my client's responsibility to monitor the building department and building permits. This is a condominium, and you correctly noted that this was submitted to condominium status in 2016. Pursuant to the master deed of this condominium, any unit owner, including Dr. Askewbar, who wants to make structural repairs or do any additions to their exclusive use areas, needs to present to the board and obtain their consent. That was not done here. If that would have been done here, my clients would have been made aware of this at the appropriate time prior to the issuance of a building permit. That was not done. There was no communications with Dr. Askewbar and my clients or his wife with my clients concerning the wish to construct a structure on the condominium property. They further say that on July 23, the contractor arrives to basically install footings of the shed. They allege in their opposition that the end of July or the first days of August, after footing, footings were installed, that Dr. Askewbar and his wife met with my client at the property by the newly poured shed footings, where they discussed what would be built and the dimensions of the shed. They indicate that my client initiated that meeting. My client is on the Zoom and is willing to testify tonight, if need be, that that conversation never happened. What occurred in the end of July or August was that Mr. and Mrs., or Dr. Askewbar and his wife, would believe that their son was parking in front of our five-car bay garage on the unit. My client went over to have a conversation with Dr. Askewbar and his wife and to talk about that parking situation and to address and try to assist and assisting and making sure that parking is done appropriately. At that time, even if the footings were in place, if you've been out to this property, there's a large row of avaribadi trees in front. My client states that she never stepped foot onto that property and had the conversation from the road. Even if there were inches, a couple of inches of footings that were in place at that time, my client does not recall seeing it and has no memory of seeing that or has no memory of having any communications with Dr. Askewbar about the shed being put on there. There's nothing in the meeting minutes of the condominium. There's no discussions whatsoever about a shed being constructed on this condominium property at any point in time until September, when the materials were delivered that my client saw. If you go back to the photograph that I showed you before, you'll see that my client's property is closer to the ocean here. Viewing the condominium property is obstructed. There is no ability for my client on a daily basis to basically see what is going on on this property, particularly. particularly in the area to where the shed was constructed. Like the Dr. Escobar's property is located down here further to the south as identified on this picture. When my client comes and goes from her house, she takes a right out of her property going away from the condominium and rarely if ever takes a left. It was not until September that she heard and saw a construction vehicle basically delivering those materials that she became aware that there was construction activity potentially going on that site. Being concerned that there was no notice at all about the construction of the shed within quotations on this property, she went to the town, learned that a billing permit had been issued and immediately within weeks retained counsel and filed a zoning opposition. We believe that their merits of the argument alleging that this case should be dismissed because of the 30 day deadline is contrary to well settled precedent. The SJC has indicated that a party who is not aware of or had reasonable knowledge of construction activities basically has the opportunity after the 30 day period to appeal in this situation.
What decision is that that you've just called?
The decision that I quoted is the same decision that I quoted to you before.
Going back to Gallivan, right?
Going back to Gallivan, I'm also going back to Connor.
Okay, thank you.
So in essence, what we have here is in the opposition, they admit that construction didn't start until July. There is no other way that my client would become aware that any construction activity would occur on that property until at least that date and time, which is past the 30 day period. By being past that 30 day period, there is no opportunity for her to appeal that billing permit within that time period. As a result, it's our position that it was timely filed and under the law that this petition to overturn the building commissioner's decision declining to enforce the zoning bylaw is properly before this board. Going to the merits of the case to it is our position, it's clear that we have a property that is 25,000 square feet. It's pre-existing non-conforming. In order to construct a new structure, there, there was not an existing structure on this property. We're talking about a completely new shed structure being installed on an undersized lot. While an accessory use is permitted, you also got to meet the, the, the dimensional requirements of the zoning bylaw. And by having an undersized lot, it doesn't meet those. What they needed to do was to request a variance from this board. Basically requesting that a variance be issued so that they can construct this two bay garage with dormers in an upper level, which potentially looks like it could be used for habitable space. I'm not sure if the project has completed at this time or not, but I do understand that there are photos in your packages of, of, of current stages of where it is.
Is there anything else you want to?
Yes, I apologize. I'm just
Oh, it's okay. Take your time. I just wasn't
Moving on, I apologize. It is our position that is our position that there's no dispute that the subject property is undersized and not compliant with the zoning bylaw. The subject property is located in RS 40 zoning district, which requires a lot area 40,000 square feet, but contains 25,910 square feet. Each deficiency is a characteristic of the parcel rather than the structures located thereon. Pursuant to settle law and commonwealth, when a lot is not conforming with zoning requirements, a property owner is required to obtain zoning relief from the zoning board in order to undertake any structural change on the property, even those that otherwise comply with the dimensional requirements. Respectfully, the building commissioner's statement in his February 3rd, 2022 memo to defect that the accessory structure meets all of the dimensional requirements of the zoning bylaw fails to fully consider the complete circumstances presented in this application, which is yes, but you have to look at the lot. It is undersized. And when you have an undersized lot, you need to seek a variance. That was not done here. In the circumstances in which a party proposes to build a new structure on a non-conforming lot, it cannot meet the requirements of the zoning bylaw and is not entitled to a billing permit as a right. Instead, the new structure must obtain a variance. Finally, if you look at the package that I have provided and go to page two. In the opposition, they provide an as-built plan of the shed. The building permit that was granted back in May of 2016 granted a 14 by 17 shed. What is purportedly shown here is a shed that is 17.7 and by 14.7. In essence, not only did they unlawfully obtain a building permit to proceed with this, but they proceeded with constructing a building that was in violation of that building permit. It's my understanding that just two days ago, the building commissioner modified the description of the building permit to authorize a 14 by seven by 17.7 storage shed. Clearly, that's going to open up another appeal period by doing that. But also at the same time, it doesn't rectify the problem. What needs to be focused on here is that this is a pre-existing non-conforming lot that is adding a new structure to that lot. In order to do that, they need to seek a variance. Thank you very much for your time and I'm happy to answer any questions that
Thank you. Unlike the usual, I'm going to jump in first. Okay. I've, I've read Galvin and I've read the Cornell case. And I have to tell you, I, I'm just guess that Galvin has been the underlying basis for the suggestion that the appeal period has somehow been extended or in the arguments that you use from it. Because as you know, it has nothing to do with this case. It has to do with the superior court decision that was considered precedent on whether or not R48 was buildable. So when the building commission of them issued a building permit on what had judicially been determined was non-billable, buildable, that was the end of the day. And that's what the decision says. It does not say what you're alleging it to say.
Well, if you accept your proposition is true, then no one would ever be able to bring a 48 section seven appeal within the six year statute limitation. That is absolutely meaningless, which is not what the legislature intended. I believe the SJC got it 100% right by identifying, and I'll read it specifically. I don't know how more clearly it can be represented.
To read it specifically.
Well, I, it seems like I do. I, I mean, at the end of the day, they have
Are you disagreeing with me that it was decided based upon? Are you in disagreement with me that the man, the reason for the decision was that the constable superior court had rendered a judgment concerning the non-billable lot at, at lot 48?
What I am representing to you is that that case can be used for the proposition that there are two separate appeal periods in connection with when a person who is agreed by building permit can appeal. And that that case sets forth that there are two periods. And it is specific that if the person did not have adequate knowledge or could have known that a building permit was issued or saw construction work going on that property or, or was informed by the applicant prior to issuing the building permit, then yeah, the 30 day period applies. But for those people who then become aware that a building permit was issued and they construct this property, the statute in 48 seven basically allows that party to bring this action, which it did in order to seek enforcement of that building permit. And in this situation, that's what the facts demonstrate and that's, that's what happened here.
Well, I, I disagree with you, but that's okay. The dimensional requirements that you speak to, because it's an undersized lot and it has the relief for condominium. And now they're putting a structure on, not a habitable structure, but a structure on that meets the dimensional requirements of the town of Yarmouth setbacks and sideline and rear space. If it meets those, we don't have to give any relief from this.
Why not? It's an undersized lot. It's a new structure. It's not a pre-existing non-conforming structure. You're basically saying that anyone in this town who has a property that can have an accessory structure and that lot is undersized, go ahead, build whatever you want. It's fine.
I disagree with you.
That's exactly what you just said.
We have certain grandfathering provisions that go beyond that and
But what are they in this situation?
Stop, stop, sir.
It's a condominium. I apologize, Mr. Chairman.
I am not going to argue with you.
I apologize, Mr. Chairman.
And one more thing, we have to keep our eye on the ball. You have brought an appeal from the building commission as determination that the appeal period had run. We're not here to talk about the building permit or its merits. You could have done that had the appeal properly been brought. Right? That's when those issues would have come up, right?
How is my appeal not properly brought? My appeal is brought before you contesting on timely
In terms of time, sir.
What's the time?
Thirty days.
What's the timing issue that, that you were raising?
Well, I have two people representing two different things factually. One that says they, they went over and they talked about the sonotubes. And the other that says, no, we didn't. Never had any such conversation.
Yeah, but you're missing the point. That conversation was in July of, of July 23rd of 2001. The building permit was issued in March, May. There was no possible way that they could have appealed prior to that conversation.
Absolutely. You're absolutely right. But 30 days after they hit, no. 30 days after the issuance of the, 30 days after the actual notice would have brought it into August, right?
They had an initial 30 day period from the issuance of billing permit. Everything after that, according to the SJC, send us to town council, get their opinion on this thing. That's what I would recommend because I am right on this issue. There are two separate time periods. They unfortunately have admitted in their opposition that the first time that we could possibly become aware of this was July 23rd.
And wouldn't that bring us then to August 23rd?
Because we're already
It was actual knowledge.
We're already beyond the 30 day period. We can't comply with that 30 day period. I don't see how you're laughing.
Because I, I think your argument is circuitous and it's not accurate.
What is
Clearly, it clearly
What part of the law says that I have to appeal from 30 days of knowledge? That's not what the cases say. They say 30 days from the issuance of the building permit. And if I can't meet that, then I can basically take advantage of 48 section seven and appeal within six years. I didn't wait six years where I would be subject to statute limitations or latches.
So I'm going to tell you, I'm going to tell you. I disagree with you and you're not going to get a four oh vote. I can tell you that right now.
Well, that's clear. Mr. Chairman, I'm basically recommending that to everyone on this board without even having any discussion from any other member.
Mr. Chairman, I have a few other
Aye, sir. I am not going to vote favorably.
You just said this board is not going to get four votes. That's exactly what you just said.
Because I'm one of the four.
Yeah, but are you directing your other members to vote in favor? That's exactly what you just said.
If they vote in favor three to one, it still fails, sir.
I don't see what the issue is here and why you are so aggressive on this one issue.
Because I feel very strongly that when we have given legal opinions, that they are accurately stated. And I, sir, you asked me and I'm responding. And I believe that was not done in this instance. Okay?
Mr. Chairman, I have a few questions actually of the petitioner here that might make some of this moot. You said the building permit was issued for a certain size and that size wasn't built. It was actually actually larger. Okay. It was, so that's an issue as well, right? That you have to, would have to go before that. And I also have a very interesting issue relevant to the plans. The as-built is shown. And looking at the plan and looking at the original plan relevant to the exclusive use areas and the dimensions, it doesn't make sense to me. Matter of fact, it's wrong.
It, it is completely wrong. This plan makes zero sense and this is the plan in which they filed. But for some reason, this town seems to be happy with an application which is submitted that identifies this zoning in R25.
No, no, I'm not talking about the zoning in, in terms of being R25 or RS 40 or anything. That's another issue and I don't think that's really relevant to be honest with you.
This as-built plan doesn't appear to be accurate to me, but this is what was submitted by the opposition. This is not my plan. This is what was submitted by
No, well, that's right. And I'm not, I'm, I'm, I'm going to side on in this regard is relevant to the fact that I think the shed is not built properly and it's, if you look at the exclusive use, use area of what we call, we'd call unit three, the garage. In the original plan, unless there was some other plan here we don't know about. That shows a much larger area than what it's showing on, on this.
They have constructed within unit two and into what appears
Appears to be the exclusive use area for
Three.
For unit three.
Yes, that is another issue in which we have, which is another potential issue in which we
Because if I take the only dimensions available on the as-built plan, it shows your, the new shed being 54.9 feet if my eyes don't deceive me from the northerly lot line. If I add up the figures of the existing garage being 46 point something feet long, plus in another 11 point something feet to the lot line there, that's already 57 feet. Plus, I believe it's a five foot additional space for the exclusive use area until you get to the so-called exclusive use area lot line, so-called, which works out to be 63 feet or so. And I, I just started to look at this after eyeballing the fact that that's supposed to be 15 feet, that little jog and between unit two and three, two, two and one. And I said, no, something's wrong here and it's just not right. So I think the as-built is showing the shed, it's not showing the exclusive use areas wrong and the shed is actually on to the exclusive use area of, of your client's parcel.
Yes.
So that's, that's the biggest problem I see. I think it needs to be, at the very least, it would have to be moved and get a new building permit and potentially new. You know, and then, then you could once again claim you know, be before this board within your 30 day period, I suppose.
We absolutely could and we did not receive this information until February 8th, which is when the opposition materials were filed.
So I, I think the shed's incorrect. I think the as-built is incorrect and you got, they have other issues as well that gives you
That aren't before us.
That aren't before us. But I'm, I'm just saying, I don't think we can judge on on whether this shed is okay and built, built where it is when it's, when the as-built is showing it incorrectly.
Well, I think what you have before you tonight is a determination as to whether or not a new structure can be constructed on an undersized lot. That's what's before you. And in essence, you're going to set some great precedent by allowing this to happen. Anybody in this town who has an undersized lot, based on what you're going to do tonight, can basically build, under the bylaw, I can build an accessory structure. But I don't have to take into consideration that my lot is undersized.
Ninety, ninety percent of the sites in this town are undersized as per present zoning.
Which is fine.
And they are constantly being given building permits for accessory buildings and sheds and additions and so forth, without having to have variances, provided they meet, meet zoning setbacks.
I don't see that in your bylaws that permits this board to
I believe it is there.
Well, if I, if I could chime in on that just for a minute on the, and I have read, I'm sorry, Sean, I can go by name, Mr. Chairman. And Dick, I don't mean to interrupt you, but just for a point of clarification on the accessory buildings that we allow. The only language I see is on page 29 under paragraph E. And this is in section 203, it would be 20342. And in the notes, it would be not the first E, it would, excuse me. 2035, excuse me, on page 29 under eats a side and rear setbacks for accessory buildings containing 150 square feet or less. And single story shall be six feet in all districts, but in no case shall said accessory building be closer than 12 feet to any other building on an adjacent parcel. It does not speak to whether it meets the zoning requirements for conforming in lot size as counsel is discussing. So I, I'm not sure that I, I, I'm not sure that our bylaw adequately, adequately explains that. I know we've kind of used a general rule relative to that to grant special permits or variances for accessory buildings. So that, that's all I wanted to add there. Mr. Chairman, does the, and you know, if it pleased the board, did, do you think it would be helpful to ask for a town council opinion on this matter before proceeding?
The matter before us is not the efficacy of the permit. It is whether or not the appeal was properly taken.
That is not the petition before you. That is not the petition as before you. My petition is clear. The, what you just said is what the opposition has argued. My petition argues that the, the building inspector's decision on November 10th was in air.
Well, I got a notice here. Let's make, let's go to what you replied for. That's always a good thing. Notice we sent out to the public said specifically, the applicant seeks to overturn the decision of the building commissioner. So if that's not what your application says, let's say, what what does it say?
The application specifically says, and it should be in your packet, to overturn a November tenth, two thousand twenty one determination of the building commission in which he declined to revoke building permit number two, one, zero, zero, six, seven, seven, four, which authorizes construction of a fourteen by seventeen storage shed on property located at one eighty one South Street, Yarmouth, Mass. In support of that application, which we are permitted to do, I provided a memorandum which identified the issues to which we are claiming. One of those issues specifically identifies that zoning relief required to authorize the construction of the shed on a subject property. That the decision and if and we also submitted a zoning enforcement letter in September of twenty ninth, which identified this issue as well. The zoning enforcement officer decided to conclude that because an accessory structure can be constructed on this property, that it was compliant with the bylaw. What we are arguing and have argued in this petition, which we are absolutely allowed to do under section forty eight, eight, fifteen, is that his decision was incorrect because he failed to consider the dimensional requirements that this lot is undersized and that this shed is a new shed. It's not a it's not a pre-existing non-conformal shed to which they were looking to alter, reconstruct or redo. This is a completely new structure. Also, we have argued and brought to this board's attention that this board in two thousand and sixteen issued a decision requiring that no further structures be constructed on this property. We also have a master deed which is identified that in order to construct anything new on the property, you need to seek consent from the trust. You have representations from me. I have my client on the phone, which will indicate that at no time at all was that request made. I've also presented evidence to you that when they originally got a special permit to construct uh an addition uh a deck, they went ahead after that was closed out and basically uh closed in that and now they have an additional room to show some zoning mismouth feasance, which is going on by property owner here. All I'm trying to accomplish tonight is if they want to proceed with this shed, they need to come before this board for variance. They haven't done that. And if they can't get the variance, then the only remedy that is available for you to to have full compliance of your zoning bylaws, which is what your duty here tonight is, is removal of that structure. They need to seek a variance. They failed to do that. The building inspector respectfully and given the fact that the building application was in air identifying R twenty five lot, no wonder he didn't look that it was an undersized lot. Because R twenty five is twenty five thousand square feet. This is an RS forty requires forty. The information that the applicant provided to him was inaccurate. So when he's looking at an application that says R twenty five and it's a twenty five thousand square foot and they want to do it and it's permitted, there's no problem. But that's not what happened here and we have an absolute right to bring that to this board's attention. And this board should care about the fact that when people come before you, they bring before you arguments and they basically bring for you the information. I know you disagree with me on a legal issue and that's fine, but that is far different than actually submitting an application to this town with the wrong address, with the wrong name for the wrong zoning district.
But that isn't why you're here.
And I repeat, I have I have more.
Here is very specific.
You're reading your notice.
You you all did it, not us. The applicant seeks the following relief from the Board of Appeals.
Are you reading your notice?
The November two on ten twenty one determination of the building commission.
Yes, and that determination denied my September twenty ninth act uh zoning request to him that we basically are looking for him to revoke the building permit. He's basically said two things in that. A, you missed the thirty day period. B, accessory structures are allowed. I basically am arguing to you, which I am permitted by law to raise all of my arguments, which I possibly.
Stop you raising them. Go free.
I did and it's properly before you for you. Then you need to consider whether or not my appeal is timely. And and if that's all that's before this board,
Oh, I.
I don't see how you're coming to that conclusion.
I I mean, I I have my own problems here relevant to the fact that we have a incorrect plan, an incorrect as-built plan. And and this uh unfortunately, the building inspector made his determinations right or right or wrong, based on a wrong plan to begin with.
The building inspector is here and would you come to this election, sir?
And I I've.
And we'll go back to your client.
One way or another, I think this is.
He's a municipal employee, he's not getting paid for sitting around, so.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Do you have any questions for me or I don't really have anything to add? I know um I provided that memo, so um if you have any questions, certainly in terms of the best of my abilities.
Again, and my my question would be the fact that at least by my calculations and I think anybody else's calculations would show that the shed is oversized as per the building permit and it's been built in the improper place. And as as Mister Igo brought out before about, you know, the idea between was having six feet, you know, from structures as well, and even though this isn't a lot line, it's a exclusive use area. Uh, this building has also been built within twelve feet of the existing garage structure, which is another problem. So and this isn't your, but I I'm just saying that I think this came before you incorrectly and therefore I think there's.
The as-built is done by a professional land surveyor, so I mean, we kind of have to accept it, so.
He's wrong unless there's some other difference between the original original plan showing the.
Yeah, and we were told that that's an exclusive use zone, it's not a lot line. So that's why in the the twelve foot separation is only on adjacent parcels. So and the building code requires no separation of one and two family residential dwellings on the same lot.
And I might then question what's the definition of parcel?
Well, yeah, that if you look at the the every plan we've ever had shows that as one big lot with just that dotted line, it's an exclusive, yeah. So to us, it's one, to us, it's one lot, you know, so that's how we've already.
And I I don't think his his determination based on what he had to work with relevant, is it okay to put a shed there? Based on our other bylaws and what you can do and I I don't think the whole forty thousand feet comes into play here at all, based on
Yeah.
uh everything else I know, and you'd probably concur with that. Uh, so I don't have any problem with that, but I do have a problem with the fact that it's built too too close or even over the exclusive use area. And uh it's in the wrong place, it's too close to the existing building and the the as-built plan is wrong, wrong, wrong.
I do, I can add to the, you know, the shed being built bigger is when we did get the as-built and found that the shed was built bigger than the permit was issued before. We did contact owners and there is an amended construction document section in the building code. So that was why we amended the description of the permit because they provided us with updated plans after we told them that, you know, you didn't build it.
Was that just the size or did that take into?
Yeah, cuz.
Okay, yeah. Because if you do the dimensions, it's it's I think it's built over the exclusive use area.
Yeah, we don't have any control over that. I mean, that's on the lot, so that would be more of a civil issue, I would think. That would be a question for, I guess, an attorney, so.
So I our inspection, yes, this as a as a shed of this size as a progressive?
Uh, we did footing inspection and then we haven't done a final yet because I you know, I don't know if it's totally complete, but we did go by, we got the as-built and I sent we went under inspector won't buy just to double check the size because we wanted to make sure that, you know, that's when we after the as-built and we went out and checked it. We realized it was bigger than what they applied for, so.
Okay, well, I I want to stick with the question about inspections. Was was there a framing inspection of this?
There hasn't been one at this time because usually sheds don't get one because although this is over two hundred square feet, so it does fall into the purview of a building permit. But normally people don't close in the shed, it stays like just studded, so you don't really need to do a frame inspection per se, we just kind of go.
Electrical inspection.
There is no electrical that I'm aware of. They said they might put some in later, but at this point, there hasn't been any put in there.
Is there a height restriction on the shed?
No, there's no, it's the same as just the height, the tight table, so.
Okay, thank you. Is that all you had for?
Yeah, unless you have any more questions, I'm here, so.
Unless counsel, do you have any questions of the of this gentleman?
No, my only question is, I guess, what are we relying on to permit a new structure on an undersized lot? What part of my law prohibit that allows somebody to add an additional structure on a undersized lot?
I guess I can only since I've been here six years and I know the former building commissioner before Mister Groze was here, that was how it was always as long as it met the setbacks, whether it was an undersized lot or not, that if it was, you know, an accessory structure, it was and it didn't, you know, go over the lot coverage, then permits, I mean, you know, there's a lot of people putting up eight, ten by twelve sheds that would be coming for variances. It would be, you know, four or five a week, you know, you'd be doing, that's all you'd be doing basically is having people come for variances for little sheds because we issue a ton of those permits.
Also, would you consider this a shed? Uh, is this considered a shed, a normal shed that people are basically constructing around here? Two garage bays, dormers and up, is that a shed?
Well, I mean, it you can just and you can describe it for whatever you want, you know, it can be called the garage or a shed, that's what they label it as, so that's, yeah.
Exactly.
So we can only go by what this like when people call it bedroom, bedroom, you know, that's what they call it, that's what we assume it's gonna be.
Right.
I think it's two sliding glass doors in the front now is what's actually there.
Yeah.
Not garage bays.
Yeah, I mean, most garages are twenty four feet by twenty, you know, so it's it's bigger than a shed, but it's certainly you could put lawn mowers in it for sure, I mean, definitely, but I don't know about parking cars in there, maybe one, but not with those two doors like that, I don't think you can do that, so.
Fourteen by seven, fourteen, seven by seventeen, seven.
Yeah.
But they did, they put sliding glass doors on the front.
Do you have any questions of this gentleman?
Um, not for him, but I I just had a question.
Wait a minute, I want I want to get him out of here. Not getting paid for sitting around here tonight. Mister Igo, do you have any questions of the gentleman?
No, no, I don't. Thank you, Mister Chairman.
And you counsel, I'll I'll offer it to you again before he leaves if you had anything else you wanted to.
Thank you, Mister Chair.
Okay, sir. Thank you for coming in. As always, we appreciate it.
I'm gonna stay.
Oh, okay. Well, then why did I bother to get try to get you? I was doing that for your benefit, not for anybody else's. All right, so uh let's go through uh I I jumped in first. Mister Frey, do you have any questions of our petition as representative?
I had one question of just a curious one. There's a a shed. Well, how many how many buildings did you understand that there were on this this uh par this parcel, which is a combined parcel, correct?
It's a combined, well, yes, once it was condominiumized as a combined parcel.
And it was it was it was, you know, combined and it had three structures, is that correct?
It had a five car garage in front. If you look at this plan.
I I got you.
So this uh Horst South Street.
But do you agree it had three structures?
It had three structures on it. It had the uh Dr. Escobar's house, it had the garage and then it had his rear uh house here on it.
Do you have any idea what there's a shed now already on the property behind the new shed that's been put up? Do you know when that was installed?
I do not know when that was installed.
And just out of curiosity, did your did you did your um client have a problem with that shed when it was built? Because it was not listed on the plan when it was put together and it's right next to the other one.
I am not aware of uh the location of that of that shed, so I apologize.
Literally, if you're looking from the street, it's literally right behind the new shed.
Okay.
So it's a it's a fourth structure. I don't know if it was on there, it's not on any of the plans that I saw when the original when the original lots were put together, but it is there.
Is it behind the garage on it looks like it's servicing the unit, the the house that's behind the garage?
It's servicing the back unit behind the garage.
There's a fence that runs along that line. Is it on that side of the fence?
Yes.
That's okay, so that must be servicing unit one.
Yes.
It would appear to be under a hundred and fifty feet, too.
Yes, and it's 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 uh but it's a structure that it looks like it's been there for a little while, but it doesn't show up in any of the plans in the past. And the reason why I asked if it wasn't on those plans, how did it get there without objection to that shed?
Again, I don't. That is not the purview in which I ever looked at, it's something I will look at, but that may have been a situation where they actually went to the board to obtain approval. It wasn't necessary for a building permit because it was such a size, it didn't require that.
I'm just curious why your client didn't object to that one if it was in the bylaws that it shouldn't be built.
I don't have an answer to that. My client is on Zoom and may be able to answer that question directly.
Wondered, there's something different going on now, that's what I'd like to know.
All I know is that this structure in which is being put on this property is of a different size, different type, different quality.
I'm not I'm not disagreeing with you on that.
What I'm off and what we are focusing on here is the fact that this unit owner has come onto the property and has done certain things that are inviolative of zoning, in our opinion.
It appears it's not the first time this has happened, not not for this owner, but on previous on on the owner that's also in the condominium. And I'm just curious as to why now there's an issue.
That unit owner is on Zoom as well. And if you want to ask him directly about that shed, I welcome you to do that. Because the other unit owner, along with my client, are on Zoom and are available to answer any questions.
Can you bring can you bring the unit owner on that can explain?
That's gonna be one seventy five South Street, Stephen Grimes.
And who is it again?
Stephen Grimes.
Thank you.
Mister Grimes.
He's on his way.
Are they able to hear this?
He's here.
He's on mute right now.
Mister Grimes, are you able to unmute?
Uh, hopefully you can hear me and see me, okay?
Yeah, we can hear you now. Thank you.
Okay, uh so uh good evening, everybody. I'm Stephen Grimes. Uh, my wife and I own the adjacent condo unit, uh one seventy nine South Street. You did have just have a question about the uh shed which I own uh on my condo unit. Uh, basically, that's uh an express shed permit that was applied for, approved, uh signed off and inspected probably about three years ago. As an express shed permit, uh that was the process I was told to follow and uh that's how it went through.
Okay, it's three years ago that it was installed?
It, we we bought the property about uh in two thousand sixteen. Uh, I think it was probably two thousand seventeen uh that I actually installed that shed, yes.
Okay, and I believe, is it correct that it's directly behind the new shed that's been built?
Uh, it's in the corner of the uh exclusive use area that belongs to me. Uh, it's probably about uh six to eight feet away from where the new uh the new property's been uh or the new shed or so-called shed has been uh constructed.
Okay, and did you have any objections when you put that shut up for anybody, just out of curiosity?
No, the 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 only, at at the time uh when the property was originally you know, basically that the the owner wasn't the main person associated with doing any work on that property. There was another lady there whose name I forget that was doing most of the work. And at the time, uh she came out and suggested that uh, you know, I could move it to pretty much the area where they've just built the shed. And my my comment was, well, I can't really build the shed on, you know, property that I don't own, so why would I do that? Uh, but that was pretty much the conversation. You know, her comment was that it was, you know, outside the side door, which it is, but at the end of the day, it's in, you know, the corner of the exclusive use area. And uh that's pretty much the only area that it could actually go on my lot, given, you know, some of the restrictions and so on. Part of my concern for putting the shed where where I did was that uh I felt that, you know, the other owner basically didn't fully understand where the exclusive use area began and end ended. And uh I was kind of concerned that he was looking to erect a fence that may go into uh my area. So it was somewhat of a move to make sure that that didn't happen.
All right, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Before you leave, before you leave, other other members may have a question for you, okay?
Sure. Uh, can I make any of the comments while I'm on here?
The comments be later.
Yeah, well, wait a minute, I just want to see if the board has any other questions, okay?
Okay.
Make all the comment you want. Mister Igo?
Uh, no questions, thank you.
Okay, I have a couple, if I could. Do you live here year round?
Uh, no, I don't. We typically use it as a summer uh summer property.
Were you here this past summer?
Uh, I was here occasionally this summer, not nearly as much this summer as in previous summers. Uh, but we did spend several weekends here, yes.
When did you see a frame go up?
It was probably the end of July uh that I saw the frame go up. Again, I I had no notification whatsoever that this was gonna happen. And the first time I had any knowledge of what was going on was when the framing of the structure, you know, became a height that was higher than my fence. So it was probably late July, but I I couldn't tell you the exact date, to be honest.
Okay, thank you, sir. You go ahead, uh Mister Igo, did you have anything of this this?
Nothing, thank you, Mister Chairman.
Okay, go ahead, sir, with your comment, please.
Okay, so I I I guess the only comments I was, you know, I was gonna make was obviously, you know, first and foremost, the, you know, like I said, the first knowledge I had of, you know, the project was when I saw, you know, the construction of the framing get higher than my my fence, which was late July. Uh, the concern I have with the property, the construction is uh really twofold. One is that uh it doesn't really look like it's intended to be a shed or used as a shed. Uh, it's got windows uh uh high, I mean, the whole construction is actually higher than my house. My house is a a single story property. Obviously, this one is, you know, uh quite quite higher than that. And there's windows at the top there that basically, you know, overlook my side yard. They, you know, destroy any privacy I might have in the side yard. And they also have a direct view into, you know, my bedroom windows that are on, you know, that corner of the house as well. So, you know, I am. as well. So, you know, I am concerned for my privacy, given that those windows exist and point in the direction, you know, of my property. Uh, and the other concern I have is that, you know, given the height of the property, uh, my, my yard is now in the shade. You know, the side yard previously, you know, was, you know, exposed to sunlight. You know, the grass was growing, the plants were growing fine. And now as a consequence of that, uh, you know, half that side yard is now in the shade uh, for pretty much, you know, till uh, till early afternoon. So uh, that, that's really my concerns with uh, you know, the whole project, so.
Thank you, sir, very much. Counsel, did you have any questions of this?
I do not, no.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Feel free to stay on if you'd like, if you, to listen and chime in.
No, I, I will. Thank you. I've been listening all along and uh, I appreciate the dialogue, so thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, there was, you wanted your client to testify as well, right?
Uh, my client is actually on there as well. I'd like to ask her if she has anything to add.
Sure, sure. Ma'am? Ms. Cambrian? Cambrian, I apologize.
Betsy, you're on me. The other lawyer.
Hold on.
Spelled wrong.
Here I am.
Boy, has her name spelled wrong everywhere. Betsy, I didn't know if you had any further information about the shed in the rear, or if you wanted to uh, speak towards uh, the conversations uh, with Dr. Escobar about your knowledge of, 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 of when you first became aware uh, that constructive activities were going on on that property.
Well, as you pointed out, um, I didn't know, I didn't have a clue about the construction because I couldn't see it. It was hidden by a fence and all the bushes. Um, and I couldn't see it from my house in any case. But what I, when I did see the materials being brought there, I went immediately to the attorney I had used to create the condo documents. Proceeded by going to get a copy of the permit, which was um, which I took to him. And then, of course, I, I followed up. Um, the one thing I'll say about the building that, that they've constructed is it definitely doesn't look like a shed. It has a second floor area with windows on the second floor facing the pond that's behind the property. And um, they, the one thing that D. Asaghar had told me was that they needed more space for their guests. And um, I guess I made the assumption, looking at the building, that they were going to put in a second floor and it was going to be additional sleeping area for their guests. And uh, I think that's, that's, those are the only new illuminating pieces of information that I can provide right now.
Thank you. Well, I have a question, please. Were you here for this past summer?
Yes.
In the months of June, July, and August?
Yes, I'm a full-time resident.
Oh, okay. I didn't realize that. Thank you. Thank you very much. Any question, anybody on the board?
I'm, I just had a follow-up. I just had a follow-up question. Um, it was the, the shed that was put on the second, the um, I think it's unit number one. Um, when that shed went up, did you have an objection to that shed by chance and?
I didn't. It was petite, it's petite. It's a real shed. It, you know, I guess that's why he was able to get that express permit, because it was so small. And it was behind the fence. Nobody could see it. It didn't obstruct anybody's view or anybody's sunshine. And it was hidden away in the corner.
So your, your frustration with this shed is because of the size primarily then? Is that correct?
This size is pretty big and it's two stories. I don't think it's meant to be a shed.
Well, that's a question. I understand that question, too. Thank you.
Thank you very much. You feel free to stay on, okay?
Thank you.
Good to see you, by the way, yeah. So does anybody, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Igo, did you have any questions of the witness?
No, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Mr. Martin?
Um, no, not that I can think of right now.
Okay, so now, we're, we're gonna get to you. And those hands keep going up. Okay, but we, you know, we do it in a path, we do it in a, pursuant to a, a direction, okay? Or a rule and regulation. Uh, would anybody care to speak in favor of this petition? If so, please come to the microphone and be heard. Seeing none. Does anybody care to speak in opposition to this petition? If so, please come to the microphone and let us see what you have to say. Does anybody just want to say anything about it? You've been raising your hand all night.
I think they want to speak in favor.
Okay, could you come right up?
Or again?
No, they're in opposition. This is Dr. Escobar.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, yeah.
I'm the uh, owner of 181 South Street. My name is Bahis Asaker.
Your name again?
Bahis Asaker, A-S-A-K-E-R.
Thank you.
Uh, I guess I'm not an attorney. I don't have the attorney language, but I'm just gonna speak in a very simple language. And I just want to raise few points. The permit was issued on May 25, 21. Construction started in July. Mrs. Camburi in July 23rd was aware of the footing being done because she came to the property to ask us what we doing. And specifically, she asked me if I mailed a check for her because she has what we call common insurance for the common area to protect everybody. And everybody has a percentage of the insurance to send every year. And my share was mailed, I guess was a little delay in the mail. She didn't receive it by that date. And was a specific question she asked me. So as of July 23rd, she was aware from the footing, we are building a shed. She shed basically was footing inspected in August 9. Full framing was done on August 18. Mrs. Camburi came to us on August 18 and requested a copy of the permit. Copy of the permit, which I have evidence right here, was emailed to her on August 21st, 2021. And this is a copy of the email.
Do you happen to have an extra copy of that?
I don't have extra copy. I can show it to you.
She asked me personally if I have permit. I said, yes.
Oh, wait a minute, wait a minute, no, ma'am, you can't do that. We're gonna go in an order. Okay? There are people at home that want to hear every word you say. They're glued to the television set.
The adventure.
Sir, do you need that, do you need that back?
No, but I can give it, we have a copy of the email.
If, if you give it to me, I have to retain it.
Why don't I take a picture of it, so I at least have?
Oh, sure, absolutely, absolutely. Is there any way we could get a photocopy from right now? Ma'am, you have to wait till you're in front of a microphone properly, okay? So we're all gonna, oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Thank you. Thank you so much, Slim. So uh, did you get a chance to see it?
That's part of it.
Yeah, it's tough to see. It's redacted, so I have no idea what that email's about.
You're right. Well, it's a matter of record, I guess, at some places.
2017, basically, July 5th.
Go ahead, what?
My neighbor basically built his shed. It's a good sized shed. Basically, to, was no, basically um, any retracting from the border. So his shed was basically right on my property line where we have exclusive use. So the fact that they consider this all one lot, really, there's no necessary to go back with any six feet or whatever dimensions required by law, because it's considered one lot. So his shed is basically right on my property line.
Okay.
Okay? Now, my shed is right behind his pro, his shed. The story of saying it's two-story shed, that's false. It's one shed. It's filled with furniture from outside that we use it in the summertime. There is no second floor. And the reason we put sliding uh, door to just match the house, Mr. Camburi has made a lot of compliment of how we improve the view of this whole area. So it is not a two-story shed. It's one story. It's a little bit higher. And the reason why it was a little bit higher because we had a septic system and we had to elevate the structure a little bit in the back. So it's not two-story, has no electricity, and the window is only designed window. Has no access to it. Nobody can get up to it by any means.
Okay, thank you.
Does not protect the sun from coming to the next property because it's right behind the property. So on my left is the garage. Behind me is his shed and mine is right next to him. So really does not obstruct any view. Has no impact on the sunshine, has no impact on any visions. And for somebody who lives all summer long.
Thank you.
Are in and out of their property. Her driveway is right next by the shed. Goes in and out. And it's only 50 feet between the shed and her house and property. You telling me she was not aware of the construction going on till September? So with all respect, she was well aware of this of July 23rd. She failed to even inform me or educate me of telling me of any objection from her side. So we went through the legal zoning. We went through the legal permit. Everything was inspected on time. Footing was inspected. Yes, we did change the size from initially, but we did have reapplied to the permit.
To that, sir. So if we could kind of, you know, shorten the comments, you, you were now going over things a second time, so. And I see that finger, ma'am, I see it.
I think it's two words. That's two words.
I'm done.
Okay.
I respect, thank you.
Ma'am, now you may come up to the microphone.
Yes, hi.
And tell us, tell us who you are.
Sorry?
Tell us who you are.
I am Delorda Asaker, Dr. Asaker's wife. Sorry, but I'm correcting, not Asaker.
Thank you for correcting me. I apologize for pronouncing your name.
He's Dr. Asaker, and his wife. I go by D. I used to be a good friend.
Let's get to the merits of what we're talking about.
Yes, I used to be a good friend with Betsy, which I still love her. She's a great lady. I'll still love her. First, I was offended because the season room had the permit. We didn't do without a permit. And it was inspected. Just to let you know, because you said we don't have permit for it. And we have permit number. And Ms. Betsy, she complimented me multiple times when we were doing the room that this is a lovely room. I have a degree in uh, architecture, diploma in architecture, and we love nice stuff. That's why we fixed the house. The season room looks beautiful. And since we got so many compliment, we matched the, because it's right across from the house, we matched the shed so it looks like exactly the seasonal room. That's the main reason it has these sliding doors. There is no second floor. And plus, sir, you insisted that the Asbilt, we're not professional into surveying, but we hired Merrell Engineering. He surveyed the lot. He charged us lot of money. I don't know if it's right or wrong. We can double track with him, but we know that he did it, not us. And that's a major problem if the professional engineering did something wrong. What else? Also, I mentioned to Betsy, which I still love and I respect her, that yes, we have lot of friends. We come in this summer, spend some time here. We enjoy it. We love it. And yes, that's why last year I, we, we went for the conservation and we got approved to have an addition. That's why, yes, we were planning to have a family room for our friends to sleep over when they come for the, went for the weekend. Other than that, I don't know if uh, the neighbors exactly, they have their shed. Ms. Cambrian never, never objected to our neighbors. I don't know why they are allowed to have their shed, but not ours. We have lot of furniture outside, which is they are in now. I think that's it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
When I saw that hand go up like that, I thought we might have you up there for an hour or so. Oh, sure. Oh, you, did you have questions already?
I did.
Oh, please come back to the microphone.
I just had a question for whichever one of you wants to answer. Um, you, you have no intention of using that shed?
No, we don't have any intentions.
Habitual space?
No, because again, we applied for an addition, which is we didn't finish yet. That will be the guests, for our guests.
So your intent is to use it for furniture storage?
It's only, it's full with furniture and umbrellas and lounge chairs and everything is full. It's like no way it can be for guests.
All right, thank you.
And like my husband said, it's little bit higher because right next to it, there is a septic system. That's why we have, and Ms. Betsy, she insisted every time she'll come visit me, she'll take careful because there is a septic here. Don't step here. Don't park here. Don't, that's why it's higher. And it looks beautiful because everybody passing by, he noticed how beautiful is this area.
Yeah, you told us. Don't leave though, okay?
Okay.
Mr. Martin?
Yeah, I had another question, too, of, again, of them, of uh, the doctor or his wife. Considering the plans that have been given to us and the Asbilt and so forth doesn't show it, uh, what is, do you happen to know the exact footage of your shed to the petitioner, I guess? I keep mixing up who's who, but the petitioner's garage. Is it, is it three feet, five feet, 10 feet?
What is?
Uh, the distance of your shed.
How big is it?
Asbilt.
Asbilt?
No, I don't, not know how big it is, but how close is it to the garage?
How close to the garage? There is probably, you can walk around it.
So maybe three or four feet?
There is probably.
Excuse me.
I would say like three feet.
Okay. Which brings me back to my subject that it's built in the wrong spot. Yeah.
Mr. Igo, do you have any questions?
I don't, Mr. Chairman, but a point of order, uh, I, I think we're getting a little far afield as to what the actual question is. And I think we should revert back to the question on the petition, not what the shed is going to be used for. That's really not before us tonight.
The petitioner went a little bit of field of the application as well. So I mean, right now, we're at the end, the, the end, last witness, except for the fact the counsel for the petitioner may have questions of, of the witness.
Sure.
Okay, then ma'am, if you'd step back, okay? So is there anything else you wanted to present?
No, I think you presented our petition.
Okay, um, then we close it to the public input and open it up to board discussion. Mr. Martin? On the question that's presented by the application for the appeal from the building commissioner.
I, I, I don't have any issue with the fact that there is a shed being built there relevant to uh, lot line setbacks and setback from the street and um, and so forth. I, I do have, and I'm not even sure where it comes to. I, you know, I, I don't know even which way to vote for this because we've, we've got a um, a butter complaining about, uh, about the size and location of the shed. And the shed isn't where it's supposed to be. So I mean, it's like, I, I don't know how to uh, answer this. It's, your shed is, as it stands right now anyways, is on the um, is on the land of the petitioner who's petitioning against the location of it. Uh, and so where that puts me, I don't know, but I think there's some other issues. And I think if the, if the building inspector had the correct uh, Asbilt plan, uh, he would have had some issues as well. In fact, I can't imagine why he wouldn't have. So I don't, I don't even know where that puts me. I don't have any, uh, some of the arguments that are made as to the shed being okay and being okay where it is and meeting certain setbacks are okay. Um, but I don't know how But I don't know how I need to vote on this based on the fact it's not where it's supposed to be to begin with.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Frapery?
Well, I'm a, I'm a bit, a bit uncomfortable making a decision. Primarily, it's, there's so many legal things here. I have to admit, I'm not a lawyer. So for me, it's a challenging thing. I'm trying to listen through.
Want a continuance? He's suggesting he would like one. Do you want a continuance?
I have no issue with this board, uh, potentially seeking some additional advice on this, some further clarification on some of the issues of which have arisen. I would have no issue with that.
I have to tell you that you can't ask the, for the town council.
Okay.
It, it, you can make the request. Selena will make the request, but it has to be approved because it costs us money.
Okay.
Okay? So it has to be approved by the town clerk, we, or the town manager. We cannot make that determination. Is that what you're asking for, is a, is a weigh-in from the town council?
That is what I was getting at, yes.
Is that where you wanted to go to, Mr. Igo?
Well, i- in the beginning, uh, and perhaps with further discussion with the board, that may be where we might go, but just raising a couple of points. The two issues that I hear from petitioner's counsel are, one, that the appeal was made within the thirty days. So I think we should make a determination whether it was made within the thirty days or not. Uh, or if, if it should have been told at all based upon the petitioner not having actual or constructive knowledge that the building permit had been issued. The second issue that counsel raises is whether that structure should have been allowed to be built at all. Because as he's presented to the board tonight, he, whether that building permit was issued or not issued, it should never have been issued without relief from this board. And his position is it required a variance. And I've read the case law that he has, um, set forth. And I have looked at our bylaw, and I must say that our bylaw is a little, um, sketchy on that. And I'm not sure that we don't need to tighten that up. But either way, I think we could do a vote tonight, uh, whether we believe those two things. I don't know that we need town council to weigh in unless we want town council to weigh on, weigh in on whether it actually requires variance, and if that's the wishes of the board. But if we were to, uh, vote this one way or the other, the aggrieved party has an adequate remedy at law either to appeal this decision to the Superior Court of the Land Court. And also, they have an adequate remedy at law within the master deed of the condo documents that one of the parties that owns a condominium inside there has violated the terms of those documents by building a shed in the wrong place. So that would be another remedy that would be afforded to them. So either way, uh, I think we could decide this, but if the, uh, if the board is inclined to seek um, an opinion of town council, which might not be a bad idea, because I do think the petitioner's counsel has raised questions that certainly I have relative to whether these sheds that we have been, that the town has been giving shed permits to on these undersized lots that don't have the uh, legal protections of legally pre-existing non-conforming, should have been issued or not, and should be issued in the future. So maybe it might not be a bad idea, uh, to get an opinion from town council, and then maybe we could continue this and then make a decision from there. That's just my suggestion. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Frapery?
So what I didn't get a chance quite to, I kind of agree with Mr. Igo on some of those points, but what I was getting at is as far as the thirty days, I, I felt like they, they had adequate notice to know that that happened. So, but then there's the argument that that their attorney made that there's a extension for four, six years. I can't tell. That's what I'm having a hard time whether there should be. It doesn't sound like it, but that's why I don't feel comfortable making that decision. As far as, as far as the, whether the shed is properly built, I'd have to ask, I'd have to ask the building department to go out and check it again and, and see if there are some of the issues that Mr. Martin brought up. But, so I have, I have a couple of different things that I'm uncomfortable with and feel uncomfortable making any decision today on. The first one, and to what Mr. Igo mentioned, would certainly help, um, some. I mean, I rely on the, the, the other members of the board a lot on something like this. But I would like some help on, on some of those decisions.
I, I think that, from my perspective, I think counsel has done an incredibly good job of presenting what is, uh, factual issues here that maybe should be decided by somebody else because there's no testimony and cross-examination. That isn't allowed before this board. People talk, it's not under oath, so we take it as, as they offer it. We have two conflicting statements about the notice and, and I'm sorry, but I am looking at the petition, and I believe this is a very narrow issue for us to decide this evening, and that is, was it timely for appeal? And I'm, I'm not persuaded that we now go, need to go beyond, was it appropriate or was it not? I agree with Mr. Igo, there's absolutely a remedy, uh, under the master deed. And, and I'm sure nobody wants to litigate this thing. They just want to get it done, but it's going to be a litigation no matter what. Somebody's going to appeal our decision this evening. And, uh, I, I fully expect. And, uh, the, the master deed questions, that's for the, for the condominium association. We, we didn't have any purview over that once they're approved. That's for them to enforce or not enforce. We're not into that. I do believe that the statement that sometime in September is too vague for my well-being. The structure I've now heard was essentially framed by July twenty-three. While that is.
I was coughing. I apologize.
And that, you, you know, there's a thing called constructive notice. And, and when, when it's open and notorious and you're on the same property and you see that it's somehow blocking a view. Uh, I, I can't imagine what's more open, notorious, and available for knowledge that there is a shed going up there. Even if you don't drive down that way, you're on the same property essentially. So, I, I mean, I'm persuaded that it was, that the notice was far before sometime in September uh, being a very vague statement. So, i- I, I can't, if it goes to a vote this evening, I'm not, I'm going to not vote in favor of the petitioner overturn the building inspector's decision. Now, that's not an end of this matter. For either side, if, if we voted to overturn it, litigation's going to happen. If we voted not to approve it, uh, allow the petition, litigation's going to happen with all probability. So I, I, I think that the poor petitioner is, is in a rock and hard place, so to speak. As is the doctor and his wife. Very unfortunate that the three people living on this property are having these battles, and it's something I don't think we can, uh, do anything, uh, do anything for other than to read the face of the application and vote on what was asked in the application. Not these transgental, uh, arguments about, uh, master deeds and square footage and location. Those, that, that all should have happened before. So.
But, uh, Mr. Chairman, I'm, um, you know, I would very much prefer to see this withdrawn and, and the proposal come back to me within, come back to us with an as-built plan that's correct. I mean, I'm, we're judging this on a plan that's not even right. And, uh, and yeah, I know that doesn't hit some of the things we're trying to hit, and I, and I know, I, I mean, the whole philosophy of, you know, the thirty days and the note, and, and giving notice within a certain time is kind of crazy when you think of it in terms of for a building permit. I mean, for, for one of our decisions, for instance, you appeal within thirty days and you know, everybody knows, but if somebody's got a building permit and they haven't even started building yet, how are you going to do thirty days from that? I, I realize it's, that's a definitive issue that, uh, that, that I have trouble with, uh. And I think people should be able to, uh, appeal a building permit, uh, at such time as they realize it exists. But I also, I, I'm just not comfortable with this whole prophecy, looking at a plan that the building inspector approved that was wrong, and he didn't realize was wrong.
I, I think there was testimony, Dick, that the building department has since, uh, issued an amended uh, permit for this. Uh, I don't think.
For the size.
Okay, well, I, I don't know about the location.
Direction.
I, I, I'm not sure about the location or what have you, but that, that's really an issue for the building department. That's not really an issue for us. The issue before us, and I agree with the chairman really, is whether there was adequate notice. That, that's really what I see. I think the subsequent argument is whether it should have been issued in the, in the first place, is if I'm reading this petition correctly. So I mean, I, I, I could, I could vote on that. I, I could vote on this tonight as well.
So I'm gonna just throw out something, uh, in, in this roundtable discussion that we're having. You know, it has to come from the petitioner, obviously, but uh, in the past, we've seen petitioners themselves go to town council and ask for an opinion. And, uh, you know, I, I don't think that this needs to be decided tonight versus some other night unless the petitioner wants us to absolutely vote on it this evening. So if there was a request to continue it so that the petitioner could contact town council and de- ask town council to make some determination as to whether or not one or the other of our views are accurate as to how we should proceed with this, I wouldn't have any problem with that because I'm going to tell you, bring it to a vote this evening, and mine will be a no. Nay. So what's your pleasure?
I think, I think a continuance of this makes sense for two reasons. For the reason which you just stated, uh, I would have no problem reaching out to town council, uh, to have a conversation to see if they would uh, opine or write a letter to have a conversation. Whether or not there's an expense to it, I don't know. But I also think it's, I think it is your responsibility as the overseers of the zoning enforcement officer to advise of your concerns about the as-built plan and the situation going on there, to have an inspection, to go out, to take a look at what's going on so we can gather more information. If it comes down to a decision that this is something in which he needs relief for, that's the ultimate, that's the ultimate decision. I mean, there's two ultimate decisions I'm looking for here. It's basically this board find that the Z E O was, was an heir by granting a permit on an undersized lot for a new structure. Uh, and also was an heir finding that we did not have, that our appeal was time barred because the, the time period, you indicated that there was no testimony, uh, about when my client became aware sometime. It's actually September seventh, I believe is what she said.
I fully understand that a different, differing testimony was offered.
Going straight to your question, I have no issue with the continuance. I think it makes sense. I would be willing to contact town council. I would also suggest that it may make sense for this board to reach out to the, the building department to further investigate the as-built plan and the situation as to what was actually constructed there so we can get more information on that.
Respectfully, I don't think we're, we, we are investigators and, and, uh, uh, offer, uh, the, uh, opportunity for us to go out and obtain evidence other than to look at the parcel and have some awareness of it. And so I, I'm going to decline that offer of going to the building department. Maybe one of my peers will make that decision that it's right. I, I, what, what is your request tonight? So we can move this along. What would you like us to do?
Based on where we are today, I would request, uh, a continuance of this matter.
Okay, so we have to, uh, we have to have a vote on that first.
Mr. Chairman, could I, could I entertain, uh, the possibility of a motion here? Uh, I would like to make a motion that we continue this matter for a time certain that we can hear it again. I don't know when that is. Uh, for the purposes, for the purposes of the petitioner to contact town council at their own expense and seek an opinion from them relative to the legal argument that they've put forth before us tonight that that building permit was issued in violation of the law.
So there's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Counsel, uh, if you get a favorable vote on this motion to continue, it will require you to execute a, uh, continuation agreement, extension agreement. Okay?
I am fine with that being forwarded to me, but I would sign it and, and send it directly back.
We, we're gonna get, could you be looking for dates when this could come back on reasonably out, out there? Yes.
I guess, I guess my concern is that, uh, what I'm, to me, this is like too late as far as thirty days. But the question I have is the second part of the argument that's six years. Is that something that they could also ask counsel to make an opinion on?
I, as far as I'm concerned, I look at the face of the application before us. It's clear, it's unambiguous, and it asks for one determination. That's it.
Right.
I don't care about any attendant documents that were filed. It, that's it. So.
The next available we have is March tenth.
March tenth?
I don't know if that's enough time.
I think we can request an additional extension of NEB, but I think, uh, that's, that's reasonable.
Can you tell me, uh, what was the meeting I'm not going to be here for?
March twenty-fourth.
Okay. I can do March tenth then. Can you do March tenth? Mr. Igo?
Yes, I'm available.
And Mr. Martin?
Uh, I am. I am available. I'd also like to see it corrected as-built. I know that's maybe beyond the, um, somewhat ungermane as to their, as to their request, but I think we should have a proper plan in front of us.
I think it's all in there, ball court.
I think.
Out of mine.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah.
All right, so there's a motion made. It's been seconded. Does the board care to have any discussion on that motion to allow a continuance to March tenth, uh, two thousand twenty-two, provided the petitioner's representative signs an extension agreement to that date? Hearing none? Mr. Igo?
Aye.
Mr. Frapery?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. DeYoung, aye. So that, that motion carries favorably four to oh. And we'll look forward to seeing you again on March tenth.
Thank you very much for your time. Sorry for frustration.
Counsel, don't, don't run, okay? Just from, I mean, no, I don't mean from the table now. We, you can get out of here. But if you could give another minute or two, I'd just like to say hi to you. Okay? All right, so, um, we have a last agenda item, and that is to approve the minutes. And those minutes.
Move to approve the minutes.
What?
Move to approve the minutes.
Second.
I've read them. I'm sure everybody's read them all. And those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
That carries unanimously. The minutes are approved and.
Adhere.
Adhere, adjourn, and we are adjourned.
Yep.
All right, so who, who may?
Good night, all.